Dumelang bahulu.
Good morning ladies and gentlemen.
Legay bahulu.
How are you?
Reté, libua setwana. Leschabu kofela kastwana.
Are you all okay with speaking Setwana?
Aro no badan English, by mistake.
Anyone who prefers English, by mistake?
Aro no badan Africans, by mistake.
Anyone preferring Africans, by mistake?
Eh, sisulu. Koba bwa bua sizzul, bokemanto.
Those who speak Sizzul, please raise your hands.
Ababi, baba raro. Okay. Abua stosa. Next. Monosi. Eh, abua zin dewele. Okay, abua setwana? Okay, alright. Ayar etu kwenye ndemwote, taware seye. Le nekita bua setwana yano. Eh... Lina lama kini TV Mudiye.
My name is Mr. Ntivi Mudiye.
Eh, ke itume la kibizwa mesta maré. Lina laga kini TV Mudiye.
My name is Ntivi Mudiye.
Eh, I am a member of parliament.
Ki le lokola paramente.
I am the chairperson of the portfolio committee of Forests, Fishes and Environment.
Me ki mudula sizzulwa komitea portfolio ya diwah, bochara lihtapi le eh tikuloh.
Knaa hori simule.
I think we can begin.
Arumala.
Agree?
Lladumel. Good. Ema kizole wata resimula kusimula, or wata resimula kusimula?
Would you like us to begin to begin, or to begin to start?
You want us to start to begin, or you want us to begin to start? Abwe toloki tadebuli.
Eh, areka ta kwa resimula kusimula, kwa tza resimula kusimula.
Kimandah. Oh, gman dah. Agir yano na matadiya mona atwana. Eh, lika reki kalke felele iti, elmobi lomomba ki morut. Ke kwa toloki rey, ona matad. Draksiya. To lo na keni akur ki morut.
Oh, okay. Eh, the chairperson?
The chair.
Ah, the chairperson is a pastor. The chairperson.
Okay. No rimanda kaniit. Eh, agitse tu nui na kila mochele officially.
Let me take this opportunity to officially welcome you.
Eh, kili dumedi se mo northwest.
And greet you all in northwest.
Mo, mo ma dibey. In a local municipality.
Mo masapaliwa selechaywa magibe.
Eh, mo Bojanaala province. Bojanaala region.
Mo Kaolu niya Bojanaala.
Eh, arisimula kuta monowestik fanda.
This is not the first time we come to northwest today.
Seze retwa koo... Kenneth Kaunda.
We've already went to Kenneth Kaunda.
Le koma kamaudire monema.
Esu el esinga kamaudire monema.
Be koi inside ali Easter.
Then it coincided with the Easter.
That is why rza wana ofelele tza Bojana.
That's why we couldn't attend Bojana.
Jaa yankiri beli tza kiri ki morut. So, ikasontaka sena retzantir klimo Bojanaala, be koi zinyake rey.
Started in Bojanaala, started church.
Eh, likile, likileka bunzi fanda.
And you came in numbers today.
Agir. Horzantir likwa ndeze tabi.
Oh, you're still mad?
Neskakuwa, gman dah. Gman dah, witi akwa tari. Aoka kwata kama ndah, beke yoke yoke fele kwa ti.
You know, if I'm mad on Monday, the whole week you won't be mad.
Is, kwa taki, kim mad?
Eh, mad angry.
Ki? Eh, kana mad kwa tza angry, agitwa zefi. Eh, mad kwa tza angry. Le kana horu mad warbata. Okay. Kira gnayen. Koto dakuru utzufile. Utzukile yamwe. Eh, utzukile sebe. Oh, alright, alright. Utzukile sebe. No, utzukile, yo ke itume. Eh, ke itume. Agir na kiri kilo sebe tza kha utze. Tawikend. Okay. Linkutwile mos. Eh, ki stekilunese ore. Ali muka sato lo kizone, butata ki. Enasala simula zika freeta. Freeta satera tza sonda. Eh, okay. Ambingo shindiye. Kato kwa kote yama. Arisimula u officiali bahulu ne.
Eh, let us officially start, ladies and gentlemen.
Eh, arumala ne, kahore borre, bocher koba role. Roherre, melerbi ne, popina yabo scha.
And we will please ask all the gentlemen to take off their hats headway, so that we can start singing the national anthem.
O si si keleli Africa. Aru ka kanisu podo tayo. Isna i bitzana so Jesu. O si si keleli Africa. Oru na muroka se chava sa Jesu. Ope di se dika de ma seleli. O si muroke. O si muroke se chava sa Jesu. Se chava sa, sa Africa. Sa Africa. Echloka lo seleli. Meditinkia lo seleli. O wa seke ka kanese. Ariwa se la freki. Sons of gods who have come together. And united, we shall stand. Let the freedom of freedom. Is a Africa. O.
Eh, thank you very much.
Raliboka kumi lahan.
Welcome to the meeting of the portfolio committee.
Rato kola mochele, amoko panonya, eh komitea portfolio.
Eh, we are on a quest consulting the people of South Africa.
Remo le sizzulwa, la kwa tadi tza Africa boru.
On a piece of legislation that we want to promulgate. It is called Climate Change Bill.
Malebanale, umola utheo, umo orabatangho, ho zinyati luso. Obidiwang, eh, mula utomo uwa peto yama aluabi.
Eh, kasta twaana, mojamo ra kwe khus.
Eh, in our native language, Setwana, they say that the last person who eats is the king.
Eh, no northwestik province yabo fe.
Now, the northwest province, it is the last one.
We started in Mapumalanga, went to Limpofo.
Renera simula kwa Mapumalanga, mera kwa Limpofo.
Went to Houting, and went to Kwasulu Natal.
Ra Houting, mera uli kwa Kwasulu Natal.
Went to the eastern cape and the northern cape.
Ra kapabotshaba mocho ne kapabokoni.
We went to the western cape.
Ra kwa kapabopirin.
Eh, this weekend, lima banu, we're in the free state.
Me mafelo beke anu le mabani, renero kwa freestyle.
Eh, kachi bukitazila, renala bufelo on consultation, remo eh Bojanaala district.
Now, this is our final consultation, eh consultation day, and we are here in the Bojanaala district.
And we must hasten to report that there, eh, we have received, the bill has received, eh, overwhelming support.
Me, retwanzo kwa resimula kwa tlaosa kwa renera, eh, neo, eh renarabona, mula utomo jaka onze, me, kuli kuli kana le tse kute, kolo tata yayo ne.
Of course, with changes and recommendations.
Kali pele, lo kuli kana lidi peto, koli lidi kakanso di, wete ne tatzinwa.
Eh, which we also expect from this meeting.
Eliselo se, reselebele tze moko panong e no.
Eh, asim meeting waro, now, kim meeting waloo?
This is not our meeting, it is yours.
Aritlo obua tata, eh, watwati on obua kilo.
We're not going to say a lot, you are the ones who's going to speak a lot.
But what you should be confident and proud of is that you are going to be a badge that contributed significantly to a first, first piece of legislation in the country.
Me, janoselo se, le tloka kwa re, le tle lipi la fatse, lo kwa namutloka swa ne, kwa re, lulela, atsinyali tzo, ho, mobo ntaan we, njamo la, kwa tza mula utomo, o, lo kwa re, kwa nta nta, kudi ra kadiwa mo Africa boru.
And for that, I think you must give yourself a round of applause.
Me kantlase, kia kanya kwa re, le tloka kui ko para diat.
Maybe linali mona, lewatu shapelana matzo, la kili montle, hau tze, icha beni lo. Kinalma tatalu, ena ragiriki, kim montle, hau to lo. Akutolakor ki montle.
Eh, maybe you are jealous of the chair, of the chairperson, because he says that he's handsome, now that's why you're not flapping hands for him.
What are you saying, Wen?
Eh, I'm just saying what you are saying, Chairperson.
You must be consistent.
Very consistent quote.
Okay. Now, I want to introduce the members of parliament that I'm with here today.
Jano, karata, huitisima lokoa paramente, baba mpatile kumpie.
Eh, on my right is Honorable Vierber.
Kafale tla kura lamela moja ke, mototeke Vierber.
Honorable Vierber is a member of parliament and a member of this committee.
Mototeke Vierber ke, le lokola paramente, kape ke le toto la, eh, le lokola komite e no.
She comes from the province of Mapumalanga.
Me, otoa kopo refensing, eh, mudula sizzulwa aybita Mapumalanga.
Wena wibite. Hey. Witi, witi gman dah, tza ne ma. Kwa tza, witi, recommended, n'er pasemu la kwa parliament be. Atu baska tewa kala gman dah, cause baba twa batsebe le fresh. Eh, on my left is Honorable Dlamini.
Kafale tla, le tla kura lamela moja ke, mototeke Dlamini.
Eh, Honorable Dlamini is a member of this committee and a member of parliament. He comes from the province of Soweto.
Eh, mototeke Dlamini, ke, le lokola paramente, kama kola lokola komite e no. Me, otoa kopo refensing, eh, mudula sizzulwa areke, profensiya Soweto.
Wena warri. Heh. Ontimulag. Kala gman dah. Now, Honorable Dlamini comes from Houghtey.
Mototeke Dlamini, otoa kwa Houghtey.
Yana kisoko profesiye finkali shebe.
Where do you think the chair, the chairperson comes from?
You mean Nigeria?
Aluar Nigeria.
Or you mean Nigeria?
Kwa tza aluar Nigeria.
You mean Nigeria, or you mean Nigeria?
Aluka Nigeria, kwa tza aluar Nigeria.
Because nangas isu kuna Nigeria. Agizwa wangmarin, nangas isu kuna Nigeria.
I don't know about others.
Well, agizikisoko profesiye finkusiya. Because sanerleko di provinces, n'eliteki di badile. Eh, and honorable members were shocked today that I know these provinces like I know myself.
When we went to other provinces, eh, maloko akutla kha, ana karame kili kwa re, eh, mudula sizzulwa witi di profensi, tze inti jana jaka aditi.
Eh, the way he kiting ma dibey kade.
The way that eh, he knows ma dibey.
Yeah. Le watu ba ma dibey, moki abapala kwa witi ma dibey.
Even the residents of ma dibey, I'm well familiar with it than them.
Eritwe kili bolen. Eritwe fe. Lantimul. Gman dah, re taka tsa tsa tso. Le tazile tsa tsa tso. Ta uka di lo seleditas, seleditinze mommeli.
So.
Araska, kiskadi nsa kabona, tze itze. Me, tia tengla grave.
Eh, did you receive water?
Eh, abutloka mezi mommeli.
Water is important eh, for your body.
Abutloka mezi mommeli.
Water is important in your body.
Yeah. Abutloka tsa.
Very important.
Yeah. Now, we, me tia abutloka mommeli. Now, we had expected the executive mayor of this city to be here.
Jano, renerelebele tza kwa re, ratoropo wa motso, no onati lo kwa nati.
Eh, the briefing I got was that he or she was making a way, chiles.
Jano, te mu se to, eke bone, kwa re kha yo.
Uzelele.
Oh, kwa re omotele.
Okay, marka horu, nesteli, iliswa kali fitili. Le kana kana hori simula, utai palama e, emata.
Because you have arrived early, I think that you will catch us on the way.
Kwa kama la, oru, na tante re meli lo, na isengoro lo na, le melero.
Because by law, eh, you're not supposed to be waiting for us, we are supposed to be waiting for you.
Arumala na mone.
In agreement?
Eh, te tedi kanli lo, na kira tato. Ne tali papa dele matzo, marata ilsi amis. Eh, taren, kiko pa meti, baba kha itwa no meti. Aru no meti. Amandi to tama meti, kiba to meka shor kwa re, baba no meti.
There's lots of water, I want to make sure that our residents have water.
Eh, do you have water there Eugene? Yeah, can we get water?
Eh, fina lo mezi roko paliwa, atleast.
H two O. Okay. Now. The... Batu bako, bako Lidakh, watim?
Do we have the community from Lidakh?
Bako mokwase. Bako Titing.
From Titing?
Bako Channing.
From Channing?
Bako Buitikong.
From Buitikong?
Awutawo kizi Bojanaala ne?
So you can, you see that I know Bojanaala?
Now, oh, kiba to mo bretse fe, mo lihtabil.
It's only Brits residents from Lihtabil.
Eh, neskaloa.
No, don't fight.
Le tza tsa tsa tso. Le temperature tsa tsa tso.
I told you, as the sun rises, the temperature also rises.
Me tia tzelebo ralibomba, me tia, me tia. Eh, I am told that Bojanaala FM is here and we're live.
Kutlu kwa re, Bojanaala banale sa le mo ya me, kete, retzeneka tlamalala kote.
Anba wulele ngoka, ele hori kitlili TV.
And tell them at home that you are going to be on TV.
Eh, you are live on 408 Parliament Channel.
Retzeneka tlamalala, mo channel 408 ya parliament.
Eh, you are live on Twitter ya parliament.
Ra khasa kalamalala, loko eh Twitter ya parliament.
Le Facebook, le WhatsApp.
Ra kama kola Facebook, le WhatsApp ya parliament.
Anu to na butloka oru batu, waro na ba nyenyi.
Now, it's very important for you ladies and gentlemen to smile.
Yeah, na kana tla kila ko TV, ubudulukile. Ko TV. Are smiling?
Please, let us smile.
Yeah, yeah. Smile, this side, can you get some smile?
Kiko pa huleni ye, kafale tla kura lili.
Nice. This side, can you get a smile?
Eh, roko paliwa, niye kafale tla kura lili.
Daddy, can you smile?
Say, please smile.
Yes, nice. Wonderful. Honorable Dlamini, can you smile?
Mototeke Dlamini, roko pa horo niye, kwa niye.
Well, Honorable Weba, even if she does not smile, she's so beautiful, it's like she's smiling. Can you smile?
To tali mototeke Weba, ra fasanya, no montle, me, reta kopa horo, o niye.
Kitata kwa kibuwa, kara, smile, onza men, smile, skaito lo. Husia. Eh, I want to invite Honorable Weba.
Karata, ho laletza, mototeke Weba.
Eh, to give us an overview on climate change.
Ho rata, are fedin tla kaka re tza kwa peto yama yama aluabi.
And the purpose of this climate change here is.
Moka le, kota kote e no, ya, eh, ya peto yama a, a aluabi.
And then from the department, who is here?
Me, koto kala fa penke ma ngoting.
Oh, Mikateko is here. Eh, Shilo is also here. Yeah. Le, le, Nigeria ira. Eh, Shilo, akupa emela, udumedi se chava saru. Yeah. Le, le si ame katabi, akua emela kapera. Kua. Le mona kwa. Alamon. Please stand up, Shilo. Yeah. Leschabu kanga ngelakira Nigeria. Linkutwile mos. Asitolo ki, swa. Linkutwile kari. La la, oza ngutwa husia mer tla di bona di, di to kwa le di kula mo. Honorable Weba, you ready?
Eh, mototeke Weba.
Dumelang. Okai. Eh, ke kona wena okai. I just want to, before I give you the oversight, correct something with my chairperson.
Pele, inka lenela di tla kaka re tzu, yamo la utomo onu. Kona le singa nyana se, kwa tla koseba kanya, le mudula sizzulwa.
I'm coming from a very beautiful province.
Kisoa kopo refensing, e kli tata.
Which is called Mapumalanga.
Eh, bi diwang Mapumalanga.
Not Mapumalanga.
Esu Mapumalanga.
And this is the how many visits we've been on, but I can't get him to say it right, so.
Kaki tso kwa re, retzamilie, eh, rile ra, raza mama yataaka, eh, me, kaki kono kwa mutusa kwa re, ayitse se.
In any case, it's lovely to see all of you, it is great to have all of you here.
Le kha le, ritumela la kwa le bona, ibilo kwa mona teta tata, kona le lo na kumpie.
Now, you all have heard about climate change, that is the reason you are all here today.
Ke solo fe la kwa re, lo tle tule la uka kwa peto yama aluabi, me, kila lo ne le bakalele, hisseinfan.
So, climate change is impacting South Africa.
Me, we am, eh, peto yama yama aluabi, eh ama Africa boru, eh ama Africa boru.
It is causing droughts, crop failures, livestock.
Eh, baka eh komele lo, ibile ibola lidi polo khol.
Deaths and loss of life from floods and heat waves.
Me, batu balashele ke ma shilabo, ne kantla yame rolela, le eh, mokote o, o kwa kudi muta.
Our biodiversity. Oh, wait, now I lost my view. Sorry, Chair. Now the Chair is getting me back. Alright, eh, our biodiversity, our agriculture, our water, our settlements, infrastructure, energy and health is very vulnerable to climate change.
Di polo kholo, lidi melataro, na, de motuo, de kahotaro, na, eh, maya mabo sa. Di le tze nu tzo, tze eh, eh, mototeka kwa wili nka tsa one, dia di amiwa ke peto yama emo aluabi.
And all that I've mentioned, it gets worsened by poverty, unemployment and inequality.
Me, kape, maya mwa anu, ayeta kela pe, le kantla yaku mane, ho, lebo taka tiru.
Collaboration between different stakeholders and all tiers of government is necessary to reduce these vulnerabilities.
Jano, kwa tza, karolo, kadi tewo di wenza, buso, moka le tza batu, hobutloka tata, elo kwa ra kwa no, kou meka meka na, lebo tata joon.
To reduce the drivers of climate change and improve communication and awareness.
Kwa re, retle refetole, kwa tza refokuze, peto yama yama aluabi, eh, lo kwa re, hissedi peto, kwa mo, mo batzulon abatu.
Our constitution as well as our international agreements.
Mula utheo waro, na, moka lidi tumala no tza, na, tza bu di chaba chaba.
Such as Kyoto Protocol and Paris Agreement.
Tze tso na litio, eh, Protocol, moka le Paris Agreement.
Compels us to take steps to reduce carbon emissions and improve lives under climate change conditions.
Di repatele tza, kwa re, retle refokuze, konsa eh musiwa kaboni, moka le kuto, le kuto kafa tza aluabi la ro.
This meeting is part of the first process of developing overarching legislation to address the realities of climate change.
Jano, kota kote e no, ke kato, ya ntaere tza, kwa ra kwa no, kofetola, eh, matata, kwa tza rara rabo le matata, anu, apeto yama aluabi.
So this climate change bill is the first draft of legislation specific to climate change in South Africa.
Jano, mula utomo onu wa peto yama emo aluabi, kila, ke mula utomo wa ntawa mula utheo, o, lo kwa re, omeka meka na, kati tlamalalo, le kofetola, eh, kwa tza kwa rara bo la, bata tata, dwa eh, peto yama emo aluabi.
And the public input, your input, is essential to formulate and look, the law that aligns with the aspirations of every citizen of this country.
Me, di tza lo, tza se chaba, ke ra di tza lo tza lo, na, di butloka tata, moka tanyali tzo, ho, eh, kha kwa, eh, kwa re, kwa le, eh, molau, o, lo kwa re, utle kwa solo kela batu, bo tle mole.
Please feel free to express your views, tell us what you feel and think.
Twa twa, twa twa, roko pa kwa re, liku tle lo kwa luseki, lo kubua, le ro bolele, kwa re, liku twa ja.
On the definitions, the policy alignment, institutional arrangements, climate responses, municipalities, provincial and national adoption efforts.
Malebanale, eh, ma, ma, malebanale di tlaosa, eh, ma mareo, agiru situe, mo mula utomo onu, o, lo kwa re, o ama di karolo tzo, tje kaca za, eh, selechay, profensi, lebo se chaba.
Share also with us your views on regulation of pollution, penalties and transitional arrangements.
Me, roko pa kwa re, le tle le, lente ma ikutwa lo, na, malebanale, lo koseya, eh, koseya, kwa tza kolo sa fatse le fatse, eh, moka le, eh, kuntiwa kaka boni, jalo le jalo. Moka le, eh, kwa re, di kota hau, etwanzo kwa re, eh, kona di fe, malebanale, eh, busi ni joon.
Please be sure that everything you say today, we take note of and we as parliament take serious.
Kama mi se kha kwa re, se, le se, se, swuwa fano, receta tiya, lo kwa re, eh, paramente, eh, tza, ele khangi masisi.
Then our departmental official will highlight the key aspects of the bill.
Me, moklanke diwa ro, na, wa le fa pa, utle lo kubua, kadi nta, tza kono kono, tze, tza mula utomo onu.
Enjoy your day with us today.
Eh, rasolo fe la, le tse, tumela, le tse, la lo, na, le ro, na, kwa tse, la kumpie. Thank you very much, Honorable Weba.
Ra lebo, kama toteke Weba. Dumelang tona. Okaira. Dialots, dialots. Iliao dialots. Ay, dumé. Kera nka la, nchichi zanazo. Re, re ketsu so na se u. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Upunyuki le, wutla ji. Kato to. Right. Limutwile Honorable Weba bahulu.
Eh, so you heard what she said?
Ah, limutwile.
Did you understand?
Or, kimitseka.
Or must I call her again?
Isi o le mudula sizzulwa, wala ollo, skaito lo. Wala ollo, ngamiza kape mos. Kimo tweremos, kimo toaka. Tla bo na fe la, szele tse kha yano, asa isu kwa re, le tse kha. Skawa ito lo, kwa tze, kwa tze, kwa tze, nteleki. Okay. Eh, Mikateko. Eh, mo kimobu Jana, kimono northwest?
Eh, Mr. Kateko, here we are in northwest Bojanaala.
Eh, ribua setwana.
So this is where we speak Setwana.
Eh, renava na bamu, yano ritumese. Ribua setwana, sabo, sa, 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 sa boraro.
So as the children of this soil, we speak the real pure language.
Enka ora, witi stwaana, kito kopa, witi, swaralese kwa sakha.
So, you are free to speak in English because you can converse in Setwana.
Eh, o tla noli, kamo li kanti ma, raska wa bua, ilia, yaha kwa il.
So you can try wherever, but please don't try the one that you, it's your language.
That one.
That one.
Already. Already.
I'll see, me tsa kwa tla kusimula.
Buale ro.
So please, eh, address us.
Ga lebo.
Thank you.
Chairperson. Nikili environmental specialist za ma ma dibey.
Eh, Chairperson, kina kili, eh, mangrewa tsa tikulohomo ne ma ma dibey.
So, kiti swa.
So, Setwana, I know.
Eh. Mara, kitla bua kasho.
Eh, nonetheless, I will speak in English.
Um, greetings to the portfolio committee members and, um, the community members who are here today.
Eh, ritu medisa, maloko a, portfolio committee, moka le maloko, asa chava alintifano.
Including the colleagues from the department and the parliamentary staff.
Kwa akarisa, le badir, baba tza kopa parliament. Chore akariza le badiri, baba zonko parlamenting eh, mochole ba diribaza eh, tsachezo.
I will talk to the climate change bill briefly.
Eh, ke watla chotshalosa eh, molautshomo wa, di peto chosa maema aluabi kabukwituane.
But firstly, I want to highlight what climate change is or what causes climate change.
Me san thaketla ba thakotshalosa fano choro sentlente, peto choya maema aluabi kiin, chota kiin, se se abaka.
Climate change is caused by the different activities that are undertaken every day, including energy generation, transportation and other industrial processes.
Di peto chosa maema aluabi, di ba kwaki di tiroze di farlohaneng, ze di tswana le, di tiroze di farlohanasachotcha energy, mochole, ze di thakisang mohote.
Those different activities release gases, cold greenhouse gases such as carbon dioxide, methane and others, that warms up the atmosphere.
Eh, di tiroze di insenjaloo, di thakisa, di hasa, ze dibotchole, ze di kwelwa momoweng, ze di biduwang chore, ke ze di zatona ki bifeini, me ke zonese diyama maema aluabi.
When the atmosphere is warm, it results in many impacts as Honorable Weba has indicated.
Fa aluabi le setele hotete, lisimola lena di thamara, chosi di singonati di le malwa, jaka chamotokere Weba a talusi ze.
That and other things then led to us having to initiate this process of developing a legislative framework that will guide climate change issues in the country.
Senu, sile sadira choro refelle, ze rigile gamolau, chomo o tswanalio onu, bakochlamamolau, oilelechora otari tusa cholaola, ma emo a, amanagili peto chozalo abi eh, moholi felonlarona.
So what the bill seeks to do is to have all of us responding to climate change from reducing the impacts of climate change as well as, uh, reducing the greenhouse gases that we are emitting.
Kajalo totabu, galaloba molautshomo olewaro, na jahoro rochere zeng, karolo mochofokuze, eh, di pele lozere sasiyama ngza peto choya maema aluabi eh, mochole, chonya lezo choro, mochutuse, chotla kadi kato tarabu lozate.
It wants to bring everyone, um, to, to respond to the, the impacts of climate change, including the society and the economy, so that we are able to reduce these greenhouse gases that are being emitted and we adapt to the impacts of climate change.
Senu se, re, chotchaleza choro ruzeng, kato, yahoro refokuze, ma emo ateng, aile horo a, ama ma emo ama logo, asa chaba ama ekonomi, me lukudira choro kapera se kato, eka narakona, chofokuza, selleka, nyosani, di hasa, zeno zedi butchole, ze le hori di se diwa momoweng.
It also wants to help us ensure a just transition to a low carbon and climate resilient society as well as make or meet our obligations that we have to the UNFCCC.
Me san chapese ritusa choro, releke chota kato, e o yahu na le just transition, bui galaloba tefano fa, iloko takadi pokuzo ze di insenjaloo ze, iloko ra khabachari, eh, di kafelita, di diro, chori fikela mochela wase, batla nksidira.
So this bill has about six chapters and four schedules.
Kajalo eh, molautshomo ole, o, unadire khaolo di le tataro, li di schedule di le nme.
And as indicated, it has those objectives that I just mentioned, including definitions and principles that are guided by the National Environmental Management Act.
Me jaka hoka iwe, inali di thaloso eh, mochole, di, di, le tenu tedi di talisafa, la jaka wile, kha talisafa nafaki, molau, o, amanagleza, di peto chosa maema aluabi.
It is going to be one of the specific environmental management act and it applies within the Republic of South Africa and binds all organs of state.
Itlechona molautshomo o, ilenhoro, kechona olo mungo feela, o, kama ba tu bo tle, baba lintemona kenyaro na, me ba tshonijochoro, ba tibuchela molau, o, katsala, o, kama o, lula miswa kayaone.
And in any instance where there is a conflict on climate change issues with other legislations, the Climate Change Act will stand.
Me fa hoka di ra choro, chonali diu koha koha no fachara khamolau, o, amanagili peto chozama emo aluabi, utulana le melau, emewe, molau, o, kha, zayangarolo, e kholo, ochuli ikobe la onu, etana, o, amanaglewa peto choya maema aluabi.
Chapter two of the bill talks to institutional arrangements and how the policies will be aligned.
Me kha lo yabo bediyo na, etla buwafano faka, tula kanya ya di tewo, le hori di policiesa zonaditlecholo, lula miswa, le hori di riswa katsala, ensenja.
The first part is that all organs of state, um, are going to have to review their policies, plans and any other documentation to mainstream climate change within them.
Kato yan, thla itlechona, hori di teo ze di farlohanenza puso, digo, le digo zatoone, di sekaseke, hobona, chore, di diroza, yandi policiesa zonone, me di itulakanio, choyaka, ze di mosese, e batla memanewa, choro badira kayaone.
It is going to allow for other sectors of society such as organized labor, civil society, business to provide advice to the government on climate change matters.
Me bila chapese, nisitlecholo le, tla dekarolo zedi farlohanemose chaben, ze di tswanaliza maloko, asa chaba, di okwem, mocholi di teo ze di ngohore, ba tusepuso kahwena ya di kacololo, ma lebanale chole palepana, le di peto chosa maema aluabi.
As far as institutional arrangements are concerned, all existing intergovernmental forums within the provinces and within the district municipalities are going to have to function as climate change forums.
Me, ma lebanale, kamokho di teo di ruwahanzo nka ting, di forumo zote zeronale zonata sellechaye leza di profense, di tlechona lakohori di dire, choyaka fa batla memakayola kachonaki molau.
Those forums will be responsible for coordinating climate change matters within those provinces and municipalities.
Me di forumo ze wi, garabelo jatzo na, etabe enda kanya, huruwa kanya lo kolona misa, melawyati riso fachara kadi profense eh, li di teo ze di rela.
The, uh, premier's forum in the province will be reporting all those different activities to the presidential coordinating council and the district forums will be, uh, reporting to the provincial forums.
Me, di forumo zabo presidente, di tharomela peho, chole pata la ting, kaha zeo, meza khaolo, le zonaditla bi di romela eh, di pahotza zonana, mo di karolo zasellechaye.
And should there be a need, they may establish, uh, technical support structures that will provide technical support to this forum.
Me fa hoka na le chok, le chokke, choyahoro, chotla melaka, di tuso zase teheneki, di thakati siwa, choro bakonochotla melaka zonane, ilenhoro batla bakonochu, nalituso, ma lebanale zonane.
It also provides for the establishment of the Presidential Climate Commission and it provides details on how many people will be serving in that commission, uh, where will they be coming from and what their roles will be.
Me kha pe, etla thamela kale pata la commission yabo presidente, e, etabe motengha, nochotaliswa chore, ke batoba fe, chota ke bo mamba, batla memadira la motengha, eh, commissione ensenjaloo, le horo batla, batso kodi karolo ndife, eh, chora batla chota karolo, mositewo nseu.
Chapter three provides guidance for how climate change will be responded to in provinces and municipalities.
Khaolo yabo raro yo na, insaka elo, yahoro, ritlechubu chala yandi peto chosa maema aluabi, motengha di profense, le mona kenyote.
Uh, both provinces and municipalities will be required to undertake climate change needs and, uh, and assessments and then develop implementation plans that will give effect to what the vulnerabilities are.
Di profense eh, mochlebo masepala, ba tlechukupiachore, ba diri di sekasekopati si so, zahobona, choreki, zela efe, e ma emo, asha nijochoro, atibuchela kayaone, me batla ba, kaya lochoto khamo, choro bakonochu fikela lamokhelo o.
And the provinces, the implementation plan will be required to be integrated within the environmental implementation plan and for the municipalities for integration in IDPs.
Me eh, di tuluakanyo, zahotanya ma emo anu di riso, chotla kafala motengha di profense eh, chota kaya lochore, ba kya bakonochoro dilul, lmaha ne, leza di districti, then ba ba bakonochore, ba difikela lochapiki, chodriswa leki, ba le pata la IDP.
Chapter four talks to how we are going to respond to the impacts of climate change nationally.
Khaolo yabo ne yo na, ebonzatela, eritlechubu chala di thamara, chota di peto chosa maema aluabi, mona kenyote.
The minister will be required to gazette the national climate change adaptation objective, which will then be monitored using the indicators as to whether we are moving towards adapting to the impacts of climate change or not.
Tonayo na, itlechona wa di tata zahore, a thameli nanewo, le galonelitla meli bonza chore, rele palepana, yangle ma ema adipeto chozalo abi, le horo, ana, anza abele ma emo li, chobona chore, ambechonaritza misana, li tuluakanyo ewo.
The minister will also have to develop what we call adaptation scenarios that will help us look into the future as to how climate change is going to impact us so that we can plan better for the future.
Me bila chape tona, otakona chora, chapa anne li tuluakanyo, e, etla mutusa, chora, arutusa choleba, kwa pele, mo isahweng, chora di peto chosa maema aluabi, kana koi, e, itlechona, za mu futa, onzengyangle, chore, ritlechona lakihore, ritubu chale di peto chese, za ma emo aluabi, katsala ensenja.
This will inform the development of the national climate change adaptation strategy and plan.
Kajalo senu se, itle, itlechona zela, ekaya nochutlochotamiwa eh, zela, yaholo le palepana, li di peto chosa ma emo aluabi.
Which will then inform the review of the different policies in the sector departments that are listed in schedule two and also inform the development of the sector-specific adaptation strategies.
Me se, ositlechudira, hori di teo zote le, zedi umakiwa, mos schedule number two, bakonocholeba, chora, ambe banze, ba ipapanze le, tuluakanyo ewo ya, chole palepana, le ma emo a, 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 o katsala ensenjaloo.
And then eh, after every five years, we are going to develop a synthesis adaptation report that will be showing us how much we have adapted as a country to the impacts of climate change.
Me mora chohadiwa, chohadiwa, le digo, zate, thano, chataba khatamiwa lena, no, lele, wele, ilenhoro lo ne, le rebonsa, choro, moniwa, kenzate, thamise, osedifiti le, iridirele ja, haratamo kanya ya, chole palepana, li di peto chosa maema aluabi.
Chapter five talks to greenhouse gas emissions and removals.
Me eh, khaolo yabo cha, yo na, ibua fano faka, choncediwa kadi hasa, ze dibotchole eh, momoweng, le hutusiwa kato.
Uh, the minister will be required to gazette what we call the greenhouse gas emissions trajectory.
Me tonayo na, itlechona li di tata zahore, a thameli nanewo, le rili pizang choreki le ano, la choncediwa kadi hasa, ze dibotchole, momoweng.
This pathway helps, helps us to provide guidance on how we are going to move towards reducing our greenhouse gases.
Le, etabe, e lele ano, lebi kliyochuza chore, regaza di kato ze di fenza, chofokuza, di hasa, ze dibotchole, ze di kwelwa momoweng.
And then the minister will also provide a list of the different sectors that contributes to emitting greenhouse gases and set emission targets for them.
Me tona kape, otaba, a thamelaka lena ne, la di teo ze di farlohanenze, iloko ritiroya zonane, idera chora, banze, zidi khasa, zedi dibotchole, momoweng, me aba aba bela chore, e tshonijochoro, chotza, mo di teo zabo ne, ineseleka, nyosase kana kanga, sa choncediwa kadi hasa zabo ne, momoweng.
And then they will be reporting annually on how they are doing or whether they are meeting the targets that have been set for them.
Me batla, banza, peho wa, kala wa, kaya choro ritiroabone, ense ia yang, le horo aba fikela lamokhelo o, oba ubetwe.
The minister will also publish a list of the greenhouse gases that causes climate change and then also list the different activities that emits those gases.
Kape tona, utlecholo di ra lena ne, la di teo ze di farlohanenze, ilenhoro, di insesa, di hasa, ze no momoweng, aba kapa a thama, lele na ne, lelelele bonza, eh, choreki, zasereka, nyosase kana kanga zeo, ba di insanga so.
And then all the different people or companies that are undertaking those activities that emits those greenhouse gases will have carbon budgets allocated for them.
Me ba tu bo tle, mocholi di teo, zote, ze ilenhoro ritiroya zonane, idera chore, chutwe, di hasa, ze dibotchole, ze di zola momoweng, bo tle ba, no, ba kabe ba belwa selleka, nyosahore, eh, hasa ya carbon, e ba tshonijochoro, ba itose, e tshanza ya nasaya, selleka, nyosase kana kanga.
And then we will develop what we call the greenhouse gas emissions inventory and will have an inventory report annually.
Me mora chora hamor, laberana, lele na ne, la di teo zote, ze di insezang, di hasa, ze no momoweng, me di thla sekasekwa, le horo thabo lowa, chota le horo fetola wa, kala wa.
This, uh, report will help us show or provide evidence of how much we have reduced our greenhouse gas emissions.
Kajalo peho, ene itlechoro tusa, chonale, busupiwa chore, re, konnochofokuza, di hasa, ze di insediuwa momoweng, senu ze dibotchole, kasi leka, nyosase kana kanga.
Chapter six talks to general matters and transitional arrangements.
Me khaolo yabo ratari yo na, ibua kadi thakakarezo eh, mochole di tuluakanyo.
The most important part, it provides guidance on the type of regulations that will give effect to the act that will be developed.
Me, karlo yayo na ya konoko no, choreki, khaolo, ilenhoro, eh, renaya melawana, eh, ilenhoro, chutlochudriswa yo na, e, chotshonijochore, chole palepana, le ma emo anu, kahudrisa molau o.
It also provides for us the different type of penalties that will be given to those that are not doing what the act will be saying.
Me bila kape, etabe, inale motengha yo na, di kothaw, ze ilenhoro, eh, dinewa ba toba, ilenhoro, chabate kui kobe la, melawana, e, chutwing, ba dire, diro, e o yabo ne kayaone.
It also provides guidance on how the ministers, premiers and mayors are going to be consulting with the different stakeholders and how the public participation processes will go as well as those that will be able or will need to appeal certain sections of the legislation.
Me bila kape, etabe, ere bonza, chodi ministera, di meyara, mochleba bawe bone, eh, ba tle, ho, ikopansayang, chora ba, konnochoserimuza zana le ba bawe, le horo bo tle ba, ilenhoro, ba tle ba, baza karolo monche, ene yote, ba katu sana ja, mochlebo ne, mochutwe le zeng, bui galaloo jopele.
And it also provides guidance on which legislations will have to be amended when this one becomes an act.
Me bila kape, etabe, ere naya, le horo, eka na, melawana, efe, etla tshonalan, ke horo, efe tolo, chosa, e ma metelele, we, e, ukomoraka, ta filisa, ilimulau, dianoch o tshamilwe.
Galibo.
Thank you.
Very impressed, I must confess.
Eh, ritube la tata. Haye zedarna.
Eh? I'm very impressed.
Ki, yakatikile fe la tata.
Oh. Kimanta?
Yeah, it's Monday today.
Ordinarily mikateko speaks for about twenty-five minutes.
Eh, me kateko ubile, moekanangme zozo ele twenty-five.
Eh, ubua.
She speaks.
For about approximately twenty-five minutes.
Moekanangme zozo ele twenty-five.
Kajegu she spoke for eleven.
Now, eh, today she spoke for eleven.
Agizo urgeka, urge manta.
So I don't know whether it is because it's Monday today.
Loeno patea, di zesa manta.
Are you part of the Monday staff?
O, o tese, kawaken.
So how did the weekend go for you?
O, omometingwe. Right. Limutwile.
So, did you understand her?
Lesha.
So are you okay?
Garalina li predetermine, eh, predetermined province.
So, eke ti, lonali eh, di tserimuze, zese, lo horo, li di neule, pe la hanakuwa.
Eh, or, or, le kadi notes.
Or, eh. So it may be that you.
Bangen, uvi lo baré orwe.
Some notes with you?
Eh, atalifadi notes the wrong one.
Resolofala, orakwalo, nadino, zese lo ra hasa zonane.
In one province, they said, they invited people to a public hearing and they said, eh, badagolifun. La Honorable Dlamini. Aba fitla bakera Honorable Dlamini abu, abatwe ba bete.
So they said one province, they were invited for a public hearing and as they were coming, they actually were told that they were coming to Mr. Dlamini's funeral, where they arrived, they found Mr. Dlamini addressing the people and they took to flight.
Ah, they ran away.
Khabasiya.
In one province, they called him a ghost.
So now, in one of these provinces, bamisa horo, wa poka.
Eh, abamisa horo wa poka, barikesu.
Barikesu poko.
Ano kizo urge mon, kya isma mono to west, erkomutwara shabums.
Well, we treat him well here in Northwest.
Ronava tu bomonotwester, to tara shab.
So we people of Northwest.
Agrenagiwa.
Good treatment.
Marla uda, molili mimus, urge wa iso.
So what, can you tell from my tongue speaking that I actually belong here?
Yeah.
My dialect gives me away.
Anereliko venda, bigibuas venda, be barke wakuwa.
So I was speaking venda, in venda, they thought I belong there.
Meriago zanini, bigibuas tzunga, be barke wakuwa.
In Zanell, I was expressing myself in Tonga and then they thought, I'm actually from Zanell.
In the Western Cape, I was speaking Africans. Yeah, and they said, hey, we no wa momus.
And then in Western Cape, I was speaking Africans, they thought, oh, okay, so you are one of us from here.
En remono to west, kibuas twanases tenelezi.
Now here I'm speaking a good pure Twana in Northwest.
Eh, kwa funi zelikuwa, chora bakinye, Bujanala FM, baye redi zekatlamala.
So I asked them at home to tune into Bujanala FM so they are listening to it directly at the moment.
So lonaliwa rumelididmese.
So have you sent them messages yourselves?
Next.
You haven't.
Alawo lelele mo TV.
So you didn't tell them that you actually are on TV?
All right, I'll catch up later.
Or maybe that will catch up later.
Right, ariguan kachamet change.
Okay, Kai, let's speak about the climate change.
Now, I'm sure all of us know what happened in Kwazulu Natal last, is it last year, twenty-twenty-one?
Kesolofalora hora balibanze balona laiso hora hudirehetsingko KZN ngoaho fitilenka twenty-twenty-one.
Ano honali di pula zedi fitilizi, zedi fitilizing the result in floods.
So there were rains and torrents which actually ended up as floods.
Eh, you must have heard what happened in the Northern Cape in a small town called Kakamas.
And then kape I'm sure lukule hora hudirehetsingko Northern Cape moto ropo ehwe ehya ne baybiza hora ke Kakamas.
Where about six people passed on as a result of extreme heatwave.
Ba cho baleba rataro ba ileba swakan kaya mocho de ofitilize.
Eh, you must have experienced some droughts.
Eh, lilo nala chonazo be linzulu itabohela komelelo.
Eh, we've also came across one study that suggests that by twenty-fifty, the water levels will be eh in the middle of Table Mountain.
And then kape honali tutopa kiso ehwe erokopanelo ne haribala eh bonsa hora kati twenty-fifty eh bochodimo joinme iti boitabe bole mohalufu ya eh Table Way Mountain.
Table Mountain.
Table Mountain.
Now, to us, these are the effects of climate change.
So dido seno se, kedi tamrahoza peto haya mema aluapi.
Now, we want you to tell us what are the systems of adaptation and mitigation that we must put into this bill to respond to these effects of climate change.
Kajalo rabata hora lurubulele lehora kido kato tarabolo loridife zee ilen hora kadiza rekonocholepa lepana lidipeto ho zeno za eh maema aluapi.
Radumala.
Do we agree?
Litaritzarla hori klega manta pagi.
So sorry for having come on Monday morning.
But then Honorable Dlamini, you will then tell us.
Eh, mototehe itlameni utlochora bolelela.
How do we go about it?
Eh, ritlochodiraseno jang.
Eh, Honorable Dlamini is from a province called Sowetu.
Eh, mototehe Dlamini otoa coprofensi eh wo dula stilo arenkiya Sowetu.
We no worry.
Nahaki yitz.
Demelanga ofe.
Greetings, everyone.
La itiba pina eh na ya noa, wawabiza bonku noa, wawakeringa nawe.
Aha, so didi.
We are on that now.
So kibaralentembo.
We are on that really. Because climate change, it is a problem, it is a reality.
Eh, but di peto ho zamamo aluapi ba kaiso, but dia dire hakir ne te di te.
Boss noa arko bona itlang nyaka inga nawe, others they said, no, we are not coming, agir.
Ta hora inara hababala aratayang re aching hora taro chonu hustrinoza hababasa kebo nahakir hotzujalo.
Yeah, now that is why we want you to be part of us so that we can be able to make this bill to be reality.
Ki kalonaleba kalurebatla hora lutse karo lo mocho lerona eh la hora taro chonu hodira hora blakomo onu usiamelo hodira.
On your hands, we have the bill, agir.
Eh, lutweri mula okomo di atenza lo nacha hojalo.
We have read it.
Eh, luwe badile.
They understand that.
Luwe ekhalohanya.
Then now we need your contribution.
Jano kitlocholu kopadi tchwa elo.
So this time is yours.
Kajalo karolo eh kialona jano.
This is how it's going to happen.
Ki ritlochodira jana.
We are going to make sure all of you speak.
Eh, ritlochotshama misa hora mongolemonu alona wabua.
But this is how you're going to speak.
Me ritlochobua gamoha olatela.
You raise your hand.
Utlochotsholeza lecho.
The chairperson will note you.
Eh, mo udula stilo otaku supa.
Then now you sit down on this chest.
Obo udula mo di tlozidi fahareze.
Don't volunteer to come and sit on the chest.
Osikawa ta otaku dula musitlo osabitwa.
But our super itla uduli mo.
They will point you to say, come and take this seat.
After that.
Moraho chamor.
You'll come to the mic.
Then otamo microphone.
You say your name.
Ubuwa linala kahho.
If your name is Everlasting Dotayami.
Ah, ilen hora linala kahho ke Everlasting Dotayami.
Say so.
Eh, ibua fela jalo.
Then now you need to say to us again.
Me so tokankora bolala sona kape.
Do you accept the bill or you don't accept?
Ki hora aluamohela malo okomo onu bili eh ne eh hotza lohanana leo.
Proceed to say whatever.
Obo kanawatwa lela, ubua so bata hora bolala so.
The third thing is that now we need you to speak about the bill.
Me saburaro, rabata hora lubu enfela kamula okomo onu.
Not anything else.
Ising sepesa singwa kape.
You will be given five minutes each.
So mongolemonu alona otanewa mitoto ele me tchano.
Once your five minutes is is elapsing.
Fa eh mitotoa kahho eh me tchano ifedile.
The honorable beautiful chairperson.
Eh, mo dula stilo waruna yomunti, yotlataha. Otla emakadina.
When you see him smiling.
Karahomona anyeba.
Then you must know your time is up.
Obo itzichorna koya kahho ifedile.
Need just to take your seat.
Uchanezo utlochebo hori ya gomano.
I told agir you.
So ra ujwanache.
But those abari abatsiba nguruba bua tad.
But those who know that they speak a lot.
They won't finish in these five minutes.
Ibele kaba ikaba khonachofesa momo mitozonge eh me tchano.
We have met Chileka this side.
So renali eh mechileka.
She's wearing a beautiful jersey.
Eh, wa peri jerseyente.
It's orange in color.
Eh, o eh mala wana mune kamala.
She will give you a form.
So otalu na ya foromo.
That now you must put everything that you want to say.
Eh, bochyo ne ukwalen ukwalensekulesekuso batalhosi.
And give it back to her.
Obo omonayo.
In that form, there is an email.
Eh, honali email limuteha foromo.
If you can't give it today.
Ah, ilen hora kahokonoho monayo.
You must be able to send it next year, maybe before the end of this month.
Uchanezo ohkhonakora romella yo ne pila kubu.
With your contribution.
Eh, inali ditswailoza kahho.
Now, after we have done that.
Jano hao, hosna hodira jalo.
The chairperson will summarize what actually we have done.
Eh, mo dula stilo eh utlochosoba kanya soche jano sesitla misitlo hodire.
You can use any language, obata uguwa.
So you can speak in any language that you want?
Skasabamut.
So don't be afraid of anyone.
If you fear anything.
Ah, ilen hora honalesesososotabang.
Come to me, I'll protect you.
Ya kamochuna kitalhosi reliza.
Is that okay to all of us?
Ah, luhusiami ra ujwan.
Is that okay?
Hushia.
Okay, thank you very much.
Re, realebocha.
Beautiful chairperson. Oh, how actually going to do it, gre?
Eh, ke ki ki kisale ritlochodiraseno kanyi.
We'll take five from this side.
Reko pa matsoho ama tchanoka fale.
We'll take another five from this side.
Le matsoho ama tchanoka fale.
Then you'll sit down here and then you'll start to speak.
Lubolunafaharifa.
Thank you very much.
Lhuwisi bala kubua realebocha.
Thank you very much, Honorable Dlamini.
Eh, raholebocha, mototehe Dlamini?
Do I have to respond?
No, don't respond.
Okay, okay. He's asking me nicely not to respond. Eh, I'm always ready. Again, I'm atamanta, anka, anka, anka balama muji mokha.
Ya na, kenakisa misitlo, I never have any problems related to Mondays.
Yeah.
I'm good to go.
I'm ready anytime.
Nakungolewwe kihatela pe.
Marakrada baurumbe the beautiful Honorable Dlamini. Yeah, eh, I wish I could say the same about you, you know? Okay, let's know the hands on the right.
Arabone matsoho kafa mojen kafa.
Me, otanawan thame.
You'll be the first one, man.
Eh, more hands. Ki bwanale matsoho la hora ta di tlaya kamo.
Reko pa awu ketsakhilen matsoho.
Okay, you can stay there, it's fine. I did not realize, it's okay. My good la hora telanendang.
So rakisa microphoneu koho enantati okadulaha namon.
More hands.
Eh, matsoho baha esha awu ketsakhilen.
More hands on the right.
Okay, reko pa matsoho kafa mojen, matsoho awu ketsakhilen.
Kimanta.
It's Monday today.
Wanalima tata manta, awa kubua tadapake laso. Sanzabaje body, achaa. Tuesday, on the left, can we get more hands?
Aratlega famo living?
Me, taya.
Okay.
My brother at the back.
Luena konne komoraho.
Luena me, luena ndati. Liko loye zayalo, itiko loyeramos. Sanzawestarata waito keli futuma lepi. So lebata huda belhoru bataba vambaring belhoru nelukugamato.
So you you behave.
Eh, kethalohanya shem, kenkenalilo.
You behave very much like a car, you start it, it warms up quite a bit. And it looks like some of you want to first hear what others are to say, then they can volunteer to speak.
There ono utawor kilameli. Lilibu iluengirre olige.
Cause I know you said exactly what I was to say.
Okay, let's get more hands, how many more do we need?
Arisimololen.
Five, four, five.
Matsoho ama.
Five, can we get five more hands?
Reko pa ama kapa ama tchano baha esha. Matsoho ama kapa ama tchano.
Sanzilina kana, I don't have a problem, eh?
All right.
No problem, me, let's start with you.
So okasimolame?
Bahulu du melang?
Good day, ladies and gentlemen.
Ke kokezo bokaba, hotzua ko mututlu ngoto inde hona moma diben local municipality.
I am Kokezo Bokaba from Watwenty Mututlu here in Madibeng eh district, local municipality.
I accept the climate change bill.
Ke dumana le mula okomo onu apetohoya mema eh aluapi.
As I was going through that climate change bill.
Faken seki buisa mula okomo onu apetohoya mema eh aluapi.
Point number three, which is principles.
Mka yabo raro eh buanka melao meteo.
More F.
Eh, mo karolo F.
Eh, koi thoma kodimko, eh, the interpretation and application of this es- of this act must be guided by, koi fer, the need for decision-making to consider the special needs and circum- circumstances of localities and people that are particularly vulnerable to the adverse effect of climate change, including vulnerable workers and groups such as women, especially poor and rural women, children, especially infants and children, heritage families, the aged, the poor, the sick, and the physically challenged.
Jano eh kibatla hori sumulama karolo F, eh buanka hora, ho talusiwa leho eh ho talusiwa kamo la okomo onu. Ho sanzo hora hotla hotla eh ho ho shanele ba chailo hora eh karolo eh F ibua kabone.
We are from a depressed area.
Oronaritwa.
We regard our community as a depressed area, where everything is deprived, where our civil rights are deprived.
Reto akoli filo le re kanya hora le hateli zu, mo lohora kanya hora itshonoloza runaza bocho, le itshonoloza runaza zedi nguidi hateli zu.
As we can see now, we are in a difficult time, where we are facing low shedding.
Jano konajano remeka mekanene na kue eh tata yahohohohamotlakasi.
Low shedding is contributing to that climate change.
Ho hohohamotlakasi, ho tse nyasozoho mo eh peto honya mema eh yama ema aluapi.
Because in our community, as I'm, as, as, as I said, we are a destitute community.
Jana kethalusitze hora morafa runa eh kimo morafa runa olohoro kuwa eh umanekiki.
When there is no electricity, we use fire to cook, we use fire to iron our clothes, we use fire to boil or to to boil water, to wash ourselves, we use fire to can cook. So which means, when we use fire. Musiuola, oya angodimoola, o former ozone layer. So which means we are contributing to this global warming.
Jano eh runa kwaretwa inteng redirisamolelo, fa honale kahohamotlakasi, redirisamolelo, ho hapa, ho tapa. Eh, hodira dilo deep ifela zedi tlokeha. Me jano eh the smoke that comes from that fire contributes to to the impact of the ozone layer.
Jaga me atalusite.
Eh, as the lady has stated.
Environmental, are nearly environmental specialists. Kinahanoru who preach wa this thing, yeah, let's protect the environment. On top of that, rezea kape di kunze, reyakoskwen ha kape hori hotzamolorala ta di kun. Di kunzo heritanakoskwen, arenan nole juhore staresekisesfe, rekapa fe la runa rabata di kun, so le runa we are contributing.
Now eh eh as the lady mentioned, with regard to environmental impact, eh that that she's a environmental specialist. Uh, the the problem is that we also, uh, not only that we we use wood to make to make fire, but we also collect wood, uh, and we don't know what kind of tree the wood we're collecting is eh is. Um, and and that also has an impact on the environment.
Neridira buikuelo, mo the Parliament of the Republic of South Africa.
Uh, we'd like to plead to the Parliament of South Africa.
Hori kari, kangeya low shedding, ekate yuatiya, enenero, ridira liwi kuelo hapori. Now, when we were growing up from private primary level, nerinal dilo tabariki di nature conservation.
And we also.
Di galakautu di scout.
And we also plead that uh this issue of a low shedding should be taken seriously. And another thing that we'd like to plead is that when we were growing up as a primary school uh uh student, we used to have uh things like nature conservation and so on.
So neroko pa mo, pokopala menteng hora okare, baka wisadilo to okoskolong, bana bayo trainiwa, basaleba banyaane, barutiwa, and then bato tokono yitor. But rekasi bili so much impact, rekasi bili batwa banti balaro, bato contributora mo.
So we ask that the Parliament, please bring back such programs to the school children so that they can be trained uh eh in relation to nature conservation.
Rela boha tata, leheru gabare, hotoba le komiti, the forums zete loring ditotoisa tuisana, le government deyaro na from coprovinci, ngoteuela to the local government, thank you.
We are thankful that they are going to be forums and committees that are going to be formed from the uh from the local government to the national government that that are going to contribute to this matter, so we thank you for that.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lucas Kumalo.
Linalameke Re Lucas Kumalo.
I'm from Matilistan, Watwenty Four.
Keso akwa Watwenty Four, Matibe State.
Because a bull.
Kimuliimi.
I am a farmer.
Take the deal from honor bull.
I came here under farmers.
Ooh, here it's the matter for other, but they affect here.
How this climate affects farming?
Come and stop here.
Let me start like this.
As da perfeer druchte es.
If there are too many droughts.
Be plenitni, be plenitni.
There isn't enough grass for my animals to feed from.
No, this is my mustaklik.
It is very important.
That daan geno be plenitni.
That there should be enough space for my animals to feed from.
So da asere di fe, nuhan finalisi.
So if they're gonna finalize this this act.
Dan vieten da, bayakemiska fe, prase nura.
And they know most communities need farms.
As ons prase he.
If we have farms.
Dan kan ons da prase verdi.
Then we can divide these farms.
As ons cerke prase verdi.
If we divide our farms like this.
Dan es da klanas verbi plenit.
Then there would be space for our animals to feed from.
Dan inikafan druchte.
Then the danger of drought.
Stan ons frey, da ons eh eh di re nichan dutani.
Then we would know that our animals would not die.
Comek nog itse.
Let me mention something else.
In the kafan, da te feer yen havese.
In a dangerous situation where there was too much rain.
Da es uru ur fuende water.
And there's floods.
In da kafan, krey ons bayamaskitay.
In that dangerous situation, we get a lot of mosquitoes.
Dan komeri sik, knofol sik, an di di re.
Uh, then a sickness called knofol sickness comes, ails ails the animals.
Onarais juasi.
When we experience that situation.
Aliyey akalgaat of.
So if you're a naked man or you're a rich man, it doesn't matter. Because all of our animals, if it is your sheep or not, if it is your animals or your cattle or not, all of us, the animals drink from the same water. They will experience the same. My comments are as follow. Let the veterinarians be there. Let me provide you with an example. If the state or the parliament as it is currently. Can provide buzzeries. For veterinarians. So that at the end of the day. So that at the end of the day, each community, which the same as which each community has a clinic, should also have their own veterinarian. Then we would be ensured that the veterinarians would be in an area for more than 24 hours at a time. And then we would be ensured that our animals would be taken care of and they would not die. At this stage, as I'm speaking. We're struggling with veterinarians. Firstly, we're struggling to be farmers because being a farmer is not an easy feat. To call out a veterinarian to come and work with your animals costs money. Those who work for the government. Aren't always there. Others sell the government's supply of medicine that they were supposed to provide to us. It is very, very important that people as well as animals have access to clean water. If there is clean water and there's also space for our animals to feed, then we empower the communities as well as farmers. If we walk that road. Then our economy will grow. It then tells the government that every farmer, doesn't matter their color. And it does, that you are an aspect of the economy wise, that you are important to the state. And if you look at 10 years ago. 10 years in the future. If nothing's going to be done, then South Africa would be just like Zimbabwe. Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts as parliamentarians to be here today.
But I'm very heartbroken.
Because I'm a member of the HTS portfolio. Now, I am saddened by the ratio that you have implemented of. Of community workers to be one to 10,000.
And for an example, at the area where I come from, Makapastat, Moritile Municipality. We have 72 villages, 26 wards. Just imagine the vastness of the area from several scale you go to Libotwani, Oobi.
And then you realize that the people that you have employed cannot even cover one area in a day. And the sad thing is that there's no signage and also there are no people who are answering the telephone calls in the offices. Now, we have challenges. When we go to the fieldwork and working as political oversight. We started by cleaning the dirt that was in the villages.
As we have the MOU with the TUT, the students were here also accompanied us.
We even went through the musheries. And old age homes. And also we went everywhere to show them how things are done. Even if you look at the local municipality that we're here in, the situation is not impressive. So I'm pleading with you, the government, to ensure that the 122 outstanding HTS or the health workers that are, the posts that are supposed to be filled, be done so that our community can be assisted. Because we have a challenge that people, that there are business people who have busheries and they need to be inspected. So if you have over 100 busheries, when are they going to be inspected? Even our livestock farmers and the crop farmers, it is a challenge. And your presence here today, it shouldn't be only the thing that you do because I think that it should be done quarterly so that people can get feedback and reports. Now, as residents of a local government, we see that it is pertinent that people be informed and given information. Because truly speaking, climate change did not just come yesterday. It's a thing that has been long spoken about. So people should know the impact about it. Now, as parliamentarians, let us make sure that we take our people seriously. Because it starts with you. Now, if you don't give us the tools that we need, it becomes difficult for us to serve the people. Now, when I go to work, I want to go to work confident and well-equipped so that I know that I'm happy to do this work. Not that I'm being coerced, but I know I do it with a joyful heart. Thank you. I'm Mr. Lucas Tapolo. Na li, two years, nde, ki rutavanabaskolo about this climate change bill. I have, it's been two years that I've been teaching schoolchildren about this climate change bill.
And also the just transition.
And I'm very glad that this schoolchildren will get the support from the government without you ignoring them. Now, I'm going to read some notes that I have copied.
We have noted with great concern that the principles which will underpin the climate change bill continues to frame affected communities as legal menace. Who are merely the subject of the decision that will be made by others. Yes, who are merely the subject of the decision that will be made by others. An example of the egregious and deliberation which this bill seeks to advocate. And continue as legal from our colonial and apartheid past. Is clause three, bracket F, which states the following. The need for decision-making to consider the special needs of circumstances of locality and people that are particularly vulnerable. To the adverse of affected climate change. The need for decision-making consider the special needs of circumstances of localities and people that are particularly vulnerable to our affected communities. It is our submission that it is exactly this type of paternalism which set at the heart of the colonial and apartheid project. Not only the inequality, but also the devastating environmental destruction. It is furthermore our submission that decision-making that affect manageable, marginable communities and vulnerable groups should be based on the principles of free prior informed consent. So that affected and impacted communities are able to make informed decisions about their well-being and in the impact of environmental. Any attempt to impose solution of affected and impacted communities will lead to greater injustice and injustice and most likely to a continual of the very same condition that resulted in the current climate change and social crisis. Then other concern, public participation. In line with our concern expressed above the bill. Only allows for a. Vulnerable of public participation which sustainably among the little more than sharing information about decision that have already been taken on behalf of the marginalized and excluded.
Daddy Lucas, Nicholas. I was going to plead with you because the time is up. What you can be able to do is to take that submission to Ms. Chilleka there. Maybe you can even send it through email because it seems that it's a very good one. So that you can allow other people to speak.
Greetings. Speaking here is Mr. Mabanda. From Wat 36 here in Madibeng.
I'm speaking as a Wat committee member. I'd like to thank the opportunity.
Kibatahulelebochala, the opportunity that you have given us. For us to come and share what we think pertaining to the climate change bill.
I'd like just to quote two paragraphs, small paragraphs from the bill.
Then I'll make my submissions and my statements. What I would like to quote first is on the preamble, the first one where it says. Everybody has the constitutional right to an environment that is not harmful to their health and well-being. And to the environment protected for the benefit of the present and future generations. Through reasonable legislative and other measures that secure ecologically sustainable development. And use of natural resources while promoting justifiable economic and social development. And my second quote is on principles. Just after what the first speaker quoted from F, I'm going to get into G. It says the need for risk adverse, the need for a risk adverse and cautious approach to be adopted. Which takes into account the limits of current knowledge. About causes and effects of climate change, of decisions and actions in relation to that. Just to add on what I've just read from this bill. I'll make my submission that I'd like to adopt the bill. But I want to just make some submissions from townships like Tleprat from where I come from. I'd like firstly to talk about the demarcation of that area. Our demarcation is where we are separated by the main road. On the map, that road is named D six three six. We are referred as Madibeng residents. And there's a sewage plant, there's a water irrigation plant of Tuan. Opposite to our location, it is referred as Tuan. And that plant, if it hits about Tleprat, it will go to Tleprat. And this place that is referred to as Tuan actually started with the residents of Tleprat living there. So it was made after the residents of Tleprat were actually living there? And that area has, I think it is from nineteen seventy-six. And according to the history that I got, they say that it actually started operating around nineteen seventy-six. And then, it is basically a network that brings sewer around, and so our place is being referred to as a stinking area. And yet from this, it has never received any savings from that plant. So this plant services people in Tuan, and yet the consequences are affecting the people who are living in Tleprat. Because it seems like, we know the consequences, but the savings are so good. Let's try not to make demarcations when coming to savings deliver.
Can you wrap up now because the time is up?
Okay, thank you. My other concern is pollution. Pollution, when coming to pollution, I'm referring to the dummies. Because there's a wasteful expenditure that is happening right now as we speak in our area. The government has built a transfer station for removing rubbish or refuse from our area. And yet there's no one that they are using to utilize that place. I was making my submission that maybe this bill may come and make amendments that they will have programs on the ground floor.
Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have more hands?
So we now have an idea what is being spoken about, so more hands are now coming up.
Okay, make you. You'll be the first, Ntati Giyo, Ntati. Be the second. Okay, sisters, you'll be the third. Sisters, you'll be the fourth. Say you'll be the fifth. Next to, Libui. Okay, Latelana. Void. Okay, Tracy, how many more do we need? How many more chairs are there? Done, nothing. Are they ten? Is it seger? Or is Monday?
Are you sure if it's just Monday?
Yeah, is it seger or is it Monday?
Are you sure or is it just Monday?
Yeah, sure. May, let's start.
Greetings, Honorable. Speaking here is Ms. Keba Mohale. From Ward twenty in Mututu. Who is responsible over the housing and human settlement. From the councillor's office. So as a resident of Mututu. The Mututu is a very small village. Which is surrounded by mines. So with regard to those mines, in my opinion. S L P. Our S L P is not enough. So I want to give you an example. Our houses actually are experiencing trembling, so climate change is causing our houses to tremble. So our houses are actually dilapidated. So the result of this is that our children and our senior citizens are not actually protected when we are off to work. So we have a mine called Vamenco. We have a mine like Ellens. And we have Jubis as well. So we are actually sitting in a problem. Right now, there is a series of assemblies or gatherings that we are attending. To see how these problems can be solved. So many people have died. Our Vamenco mine. Vamenco mine. Vamenco mine. So they say it is a bush field. It produces vanadium. So ninety-nine percent of our residents are actually suffering. They have a chest infection. So they are not able to receive a comprehensive health care with regard to that. So I'm here to make an appeal that the government must please make sure that the people who are in the area where the mine is operating, who are not necessarily working in the mine and being affected by the mining operations like this, must actually be provided with a proper health care. And I want to repeat that our houses are basically running down. So my appeal is that when we come to the side of the housing department. The parliament must please pull up their socks. Even our system of sewer, sewerage itself, it leaves much to be desired. So we actually have people trading places. They might have to move from where they live to go and have some, stay temporarily with some of their neighbors. But through that process, the government is not even able to help them with some monetary assistance while they are in their temporary residence until they are able to go back to their former residences. Now, at the end, in conclusion. I want to say please. So our Mututu, the other two villages. Tetele and Swichi. Would like the parliament to come and actually take a visit and walk about in these villages, to come and see for themselves. We are there present as the residents of these villages. The farms that have been referred to here. Would like them to be very active, the farms. And then there must be some sort of an implementation. So we are there as residents. We will be able to help the parliament. Thank you. Thank you very much, the Honorable Parliament and members of the society here at large. We want to thank the parliament for having extended an invitation to us to speak about climate change. So my belief is that climate change is not discriminatory, whether you are a human, you're an animal, you are a tree, it affects all of us. One thing that I've taken note of is that we as humans, the people. We wait first until things have gone bad, then we start talking. So one thing that I've taken note of with regard to climate change, we have a long river that is running through the cities and as it continues, it changes different names. And when it gets to where we are, it is called Moridili. This, sorry, this river is so dirty. In fact, words fail me if I want to describe that. So when you get to that river in the mornings at Honest World. So you'll see the mist actually ascending into the skies in the morning. And remember, it is coming from this very dirty river. So you can only imagine this mist as it goes up. It is carrying all of that dirt with it into the sky. And we have been actually experiencing this right from the days when we were still young. That is why I'm saying we wait until everything has been destroyed, then we start talking. This is what takes me back to the statement that we trained a child, a boy from his childhood. So while these are still young, we don't actually teach them about climate change. And then I'm speaking about us in the rural areas. As they have explained. We have been forgotten just because we are poor. This sedains us because our children needs to be taught while they are still young. Even our very little ones who are in the E C Ds. Even our very little ones who are in the E C Ds, there is no subject about climate change.
Khonavea nunku, utla kowulaila, ho re, no, le, le, le ratadimalo, le khotelehi, le muhuma sumo ilohoro, kwa zulu natala. Ho wilo wathazila, litsila, imba kintwa ma, wanintwa kwa zulu natala.
And then right now, it has been mentioned that the climate has changed so much that in eh, this and that and that has happened in K Z N, but obviously those are recent developments.
Angebeli hopola komorone, renali ilutabarangidimbaola.
And then if you think back eh, days gone by, we used to have eh, imbaola, imbaola.
Di imbaola, ke kamu, nerifiseza di, malaksha gamotin, khota u smo, kupele, before kwa be abaha ezu, khota u smo.
This is, this is where we load coal into a drum with holes around it, eh, make fire. We'll do that while preparing to cook the meals.
Kezwa nyani mo.
And of course, when we do that and then the smoke will go up into the skies, so I'm now deviating to another point.
Kajenu kimu ruakomo.
Eh.
Kajenu kimu ruakomo.
Eh, kajenu kimu ruakomo, is that your name? What is that?
Kajenu le kimu ruakomo, tsebasahayeno.
Oh, okay, so, okay, I thought you, I thought you are uttering an adage. Okay, I am a livestock farmer eh, as you see me.
The same, ya nanthwela ya matomro bulela ngati climate change, e affectedi komo za ro na, ona mezi a feta mu. A feta ngano, kay kubulaila ngayo, ne, ha khonar komo za ro na, digano agamo, kar mezo a khotelehi lebaha ezu.
So the climate change then continues to affect even our livestock because as I was referring to that particular river, remember our livestock are taking a drink from it. So there's no way actually they can be eh, um, eh, taken to this particular place to have a drink.
De komo za ro na, baha ezu, di, di apolozaka, bakalat, climate change, meziya le, a khotelehi le.
And then what happens is that then our cattle are not able to give birth to calves and this is simply because of this dirty river.
Kabonya ne, baha ezu, ki, ki tumela, tanta, wa amukela, tava yahore, bialerituhili, retomila khui, tinta di kubor, kona re lemaa hori. Kahewo ni kiti, ni kuti, kona re lemaa, na nte waru kati climate change.
So now, I'm very happy that at this point in time, um.
Ine ukare ngewasari, fina weyoleka na five minutes, ka hori, kintwa mengwa, hangebeleri file, na ku etele singa five minutes, rebulale hu kwa.
So I'm very happy that now, all of a sudden, we have roused up, coming out of our areas to see what can be done because now things have gone really bad eh, so that we can now start talking about this climate change. And this is not recent developments, this is an all, a longstanding problem of which I wish that we are not given eh five minutes to speak about this, but much more time so that you can really express these problems.
Tava yewemaga zankia, eh, ya, ya ro na, parlamenta ro na, khota, governmenta ro na. Idira bian, ho fava tu di fabriki, teile khore, di eza, batze ba pila hori, kezona te dikluira, khoteleho yalea, ho, basabar, boze hori, retswanetsu le hapule. So for an example, khonava na bakajenu, ba pesiwadi pampas.
Eh, one thing that surprises about our government is that they allow people to be able to operate some plants eh, which could actually cause smoke into their climate. But when they do that, they actually don't eh guide them as to how should their work be done so that we can avoid eh climate problems, climate change. For an example, right now today, our babies are actually being, um, they, they wear eh, eh, the diapers, the pampas.
So baha ezu, mona kengemorudula, khonamalufasela makapansate, di pampasidi latili muhutlima, rabaro, khonado batu baba kulumaka.
So right now in our Makapan city, we see.
Makapansate.
Makapansate, sorry, we see the pampas everywhere. But we have been told that there are people who are actually involved with the cleaning of the city.
Kabakalana, kwa baha ezu, ki, ki bulela khore, hey, rekakhona ro na, releba tuwa parlamenta, khotalo na releba tuwa parlamenta, ro na releba baha ezu. Lennenzeli di radiko, panose tswanana kanan, lisizahori, diro la tele, koma hai.
So I would like to say that if we can, as parliament, let's continue to have gatherings like this so that we can actually interact together and talk, but perhaps it would be great if you can come to our residential areas.
Te dunza di porleme, kiti tenda, sebadi pambato, ebasno bafadi tenda se. Haba sa zadi, loza zadi, zadi intuzao, zao khotelela, muhutli, mahaleba monitariba ezu. Biano, ntaba yo, ya retswinyaka bakalora, hemu lo wuxa, di pampastela edipxa, di ra mu, musiu munga hapu, ototlaka na li musiu la, wa kuno ki.
And one other problem also eh is that, um, the, the, when the people have been given some of the work to do, for an example, in their industries and there is fire and whatever, when it comes to the matter of pampas, we know that as long as there is fire, then smoke goes up into the skies. And when they do the work, you do not monitor eh their work so as to guide them how to avoid pollution.
Kiale wa baha ezu, garo na kwa, na li mpele nyane, na ne kinyaka wa na.
Thank you very much, eh, even though you gave me a very small amount of time, I would have loved to speak for one hour.
Eh, kia du medisa baswadi, oye.
Ah, sorry, sorry, chef, that, aurifali visone?
Basese toma wile, baha ezu, badleke mantaha, yala, kezorwatake, na li vitola kakena, ezekia le mpuhula, na koma kapansate, what twenty? Tswarelo, liselefe, li vitoka naku.
So, eh, what are you trying to say about Monday, actually? Obulzamenu, utwadi.
Eh, kia du medisa baswadi, ndelu singa, nako, eh, wame moke Andres of Petey, koma tivi stata o twenty-four.
Good day, ladies and gentlemen.
District.
Good day, ladies and gentlemen, um, without, uh, wasting time, my name is Andre, eh, Andres.
Petey.
Uh, Andres Petey from, eh, Moridel Municipality.
Ketro buaka khotelela baswadi.
I want to speak about pollution.
Khunali khotelelo yalu abi, le mezi.
I'd like to speak about pollution, uh, more so when, that I heard mother speakers before me spoke about eh, air and water pollution.
Ibeleki to itirala libuykuelo, karli kili, khonano, le muhuto ngare, kopa la la tumele tata.
And, uh.
Le rekonofitela, kura batu yante.
And also, I wa, I want to make a plea that since you are here, we, uh, we need you to come closer to us, even closer than you are.
Baswadi, baba obulizika, di pampasidi latliwa, momengahingefitiling, bonana ku elebanan, ne basa, bari di pampasi, mara ro na, mungahingoa, khonaya nun. Ra para di pampasin, na di latliwa everywhere, kama rasiku.
Uh, the gentleman before me spoke about the disposable diapers that have been, uh, that are used, uh, in these days. Whereas in their days, they used, they, they, they were using the cloth diapers. So, and these disposable diapers are being thrown around each, eh, in every, eh, every single place.
Le kometi, a papa na wala ka ona, iki ma tata baswadi, ki kamuki bulakirine, ki kupe la hori, karli kili, khonavya nun, tusu ele refayona, nresnayon. Ki, likikata tiaruna, konarla, bonor, fro mo, reyaka, nero kupe la li, li hati kama, takos, di sevisi ona har di kiri.
And, uh, also, the gen- the gentleman before me mentioned that rivers, it is a challenge. So, but we are happy that you are here near to us, so we asking for your assistance as, and we take it as a kickstart because we do not get the services that we deserve in our area.
Ki wa, ki buela mopelo, ene kere kine, ki kuela, ki ke sabi kuelo.
Coming back to my plea.
Eh, baswadi, redisa mos, mosikuwe, kiti na libita, foresto, libita. Eh, kopele kingerana yon, na di targete nji.
Um, in our, eh, in our area, we farm in a, in a for- in a forest, uh, we have many trees surrounding us.
So ribileraya, go maspalarakopa, maspalahore, orefemato, ho, kaha fula di kar, molorin kar, di teripu, komisara na ipala gufu.
We even went to the ma- to the municipality to assist us with, uh, cutting the trees that, that, that are over branching because now our cattle cannot feed due to the trees, uh, the, to, due to the, to, due to the many trees that we have.
So, le kajenu, rasa baimizi asibati, ibile, riselera, ikoela morao. So now karlo na liti, ne kena hanoritla fitla, kura batu yankoting, ne ke kupe la hori, lirile muhawo, le biniyana, yala tlela di pampaste, wekisti, le gartisa, de pedi, te taru, di abating. Mobofelun bamosi kuskuwe, kwe den, batu bortla zamabamunitaro, ba kuno tlela moti.
Uh, even today, we are still waiting for the municipality to come and assist us. So, o, we are asking you to please help us with this matter. And also to assist us, maybe if you can get two or three skippers so that we can throw away the, the disposable diapers that have been thrown around, uh, everywhere.
Eh, savu bedi, ke trowulaga, batu baba fisanna.
The, and the, the second thing that I want to mention, it is those who cause failed fires.
Ne ke kupe baswadi, urha obot, le kari, proveta ka T L B or iskavi, tase skarubulaila, ni di tsela, kama harasiku, hori. If he bafisi, tse, hufya poxene, eh, den, poxene, eh, itla basekyo, tofor, di polo lozar, na di konorupelé.
So can we ask, uh, uh, ladies and gentlemen, to please help us, maybe if you can get a T L B that we can actually create, um, a, a road that will separate two areas so that if one area is burning, it doesn't, um, affect the other area. In, in that way, we could be able to save our, our livestock.
Diabo fe lo ke baswadi, eh, momengahingefitiling, ne khunali, divoucha zene dizu, dizu elabaru akoo.
Lastly.
So ne ke kupe la hori, baylo rengasi ba di kiri, at least, aritinko, le wa na ba konu di kiriya, le ba fe zamaiso yaro. Vremo, hui ngai, den, ba iturba zamabian, ba konu ra divoucha.
L- lastly, um, last year, there were vouchers that were awarded or given to, uh, the livestock farmers. So I would like to plead that those who did not receive their vouchers, to please help them to receive it.
I thank you.
Ra le buch.
Kialu du medisa baba otle.
Good day, one and all.
Mm, kitumela horu kumpie, noru, mo parlamenta life.
I'm happy that you are alive in parliament.
Eh, linalaka kena Patricia, manini mingi Mukobani.
My name is Patricia Mukoban.
Kezoko Tlephate.
From Tlephate.
What thirty-six, Madibee.
What thirty-six, Madibee.
Eh, na, kitumkiya, ya mochela, bilige, ya climate change.
I support this, uh, climate change bill.
Eh, ne, ne, kitume zeka, khone, khunali melao, e ming, e lochore, ne, sadiri, mona konya fitiling.
And I'm happy because there were some certain clo- clauses that were not implemented in the, in the past.
So khonaya nun, di lozou, di loezachal.
Now such clauses are going to be implemented.
Eh, kitumela, kape mo la omukolu owa, uh, the greenhouse gas and mitig- mitigation plan.
More so, I am happy with the clause eh, in relation to greenhouse gases and mitigation plan.
Because the gases zedi tsete mo lapi, ngizona zedi kosan the climate change.
Because, uh, the gases that have been, eh, that, that have emitted into the atmosphere are the causes of climate change.
And then, ne, 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 kaitumela, kape kelo hori, parlamenta, ekaidira hori, eh, di palanga, di bete, di nti, like, eh, for an example, di buses, li di tereni.
And I would like to also, uh, plead with the government to ensure that there is a large transportation, such as buses and trains.
Eh, kika fana kamo tlala, bese ela isa, batu baba sixty-five.
For example, a bus can load sixty-five people.
So kelo hori, governmenta, kesa hori, di, di bese ne zedi nti, li di taxi, horan hori batu, batu, fukota, khota ma kadi koloi, hui ramusi ola.
Uh, so that, uh, if, uh, the buses and taxis are paramount in numbers, this will help, uh, people not to use the cars which emit the gases.
Eh, ne khonamo, itmo, mo hasen, kape kitumela, le khanya hori, batu, bakasutola, ba berikisa, like, for an example, kiko di mine. Batlo khuli mita, khobe rikisa gas, eh, hori batu bako, khotselasent.
And I'm also happy that there's going to be a limitation of gas, for example, the mines, uh, will have a limited amount of gas eh, emission uh, that they, uh, that they can emit. And this will help the residents who are living, uh, who are surrounded by such, uh, mines.
Eh, ne, ne, ri, ri, ki tirawu kuelo hori, skarna hori, kajegor no bua fe, khos, khonalo, huwiwa mara di, lo kere di sadira hadi.
And I plead that let this not be just a talk show, but there should be an implement, eh, eh, implementation of things that have spoken about.
Because if then di mine, iki ka uka hori, eh, kio user gas, eh, fitelitsi, khunali penalties, ki sho hori, batu koezame, kwa e menya hori, ba fukota, khobe rikisa di gas.
Because if the mines learns that, eh, eh, learn that there are penalties for o- overarching the, the gas emission, I'm sure that they will, they will make a plan or an, an, an alternative means not to go overboard.
And then, ewe kape, kisenza ne ki wale, na ko kenango ten, ki ko Tlephate, kori soriching.
I also want to em- uh, emphasize that where I stay, it is in Tlephate, where there is, uh, sewage dumps.
Khonaya nun, sorichere buaya na, e vandalized.
Now, as we, as I speak now, the sewage in our area has been vandalized.
So maso, a tla han godswani, aza na monu kenyaro, na e vitu antoloani.
So the sewage that comes from other areas come to our, our, our surrounding area of Tulan.
Eh, ne, moto loani, mo lo khonali di ground, do khonali li, bomele, bonta, de baba, baba limilemo.
And in Tulan, eh, there are lanes whereby our, uh, fathers and mothers have planted, there, 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 eh, there are crops in.
Eh, ne mezi, o, aman swaswa na le tafutuku ele molonambo.
And the color of that water is black like the cloth, uh, the, the, uh, the tablecloth you are sitting in.
Eh, ne, 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 kaitumela, lelekar, bifole, buela kopa parlamenta, miwila, za, ho, kola, tlakotlephate, la tro, bo, nasaki, wangazo, na kahon. Ina kareke motolo, mezi, o, a black, 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 ne ke mezi ilohore, ano, iki, di poloholo za ro.
And I would be grateful if, uh, after this meeting or sometime before you leave, you take a walk, uh, or, or you take a trip to Tlephate to see the color of the water that I'm talking about. This is the very water that the people and the animals must drink.
Eh, nero complain, na kati climate change, because, he, ena hori, khonali muwani, eh, ne, batu baba, ya di le di, po di, di, di vegetableo, zabo, nambo.
Now, eh, we are, eh, eh, we are concerned about the climate change because when there's a mist and, uh, the people have planted their vegetation.
Khunali kobo, e ilohore, eh, hori leza di, di jalotabo, na hori, di skebedia, hori, la, ibile di skebedian, na zelo hori, ki zedi healthy.
Now, there's a blanket that prevents the, the crops to grow and also for the life, eh, for, for their livestock to live properly.
Eh, ne, nte wonge kape, ki isu kape, ye, ne ya di pampasidi, me samoya bombe.
And also, uh, another issue is the disposable diapers and, uh, pads.
So ne ke kupe la hori, ha khonahor, ho kanali, hori, eh, di kar recyclewa, or khairwa, khon, ne, motokuano, kamo, khutleza, khota ma e.
So I'm wondering, is there a way to recycle them because they are filled in the riverbanks?
Eh, ne, another thing kape na, ne ke kupe horo, na releba tu ri, tu den hori, climate change na, kongo, e kosa le gerona.
And I would like to plead with my fellow people that we must learn that sometimes, or, or most of the time, climate change is caused by us.
Eh, ne, le parlamenta, ne ne ke kupe la kahor, khonaya nun, khunali bodi chesanyama, mezi zwa molon, na e kosa the air pollution.
And right now, there are a lot of areas that are chesanyama eh, and the, the smoke that emits from them causes climate change.
Ne ne ke kupe la hori, eh, ba parlamenta lebo, na ba katala, baza di workshop, omomising, di skebedia fe la, momo, mo, mo di maspalen fe la, khutwe lo komo sing. Hori batu batre ini, e hori, eh, rekavoeta, ya tli, me change.
And I also plead with the parliament, not just to enter in the municipalities, but they should have workshops in the townships and the, and the villages so our people can learn about the impact of, uh, climate change.
Kiale buch.
Thank you. Honore mobile, wo buaka bund, gutle, gi, gi, gutlunsoza tata. Ay, ahutse, ma ra no buaka, or mobile, mo, or bund, eh.
Um, kialu du medisa lotle, sasori saskakwan.
Eh, greetings to all our parents who are here present.
Na, ki katla khoratebe.
Eh, my name is Katla Khoratebe.
Kezwa khonomo, nomo Madibee.
So I'm right here in my, from here in Badibe.
Eh, kiale bucha for the, eh, the climate change, uh, bill.
Eh, I'm very much thankful for the climate, climate change bill.
However.
Mila fa khonze jaloo.
Eh, na, ki, ki, kinali, um, tlatlebo ya hori.
My complaint is.
Um, we need to first start kawa primary services, seri dinelamba tovarona.
Retswanetsu hori, resimo lepeleka, di tiralosa, konokono, seri di tiralambat.
Eh, because if the primary infrastructure is.
Eh, because if the primary infrastructure is not there.
Kala ba kala horu ha, di tirelo di seyo kakaka recho.
Ki buaka, primary healthcare, community, uh, development.
Ki buaka, eh, tokomelo ya buzo, ho le cha bololo molua horu.
Um, refuse management.
Eh, ho, oleloha matlakala.
All this will not be championed.
Selo seno so tse, sese fa no fa, hasi kita sese le di se duapé.
Ka horu, we need to start from the bottom and go up.
Ka horu, ne, retsane zoho re, ri, di re diro, eh, yo, khato kakhato.
Eh, um, ke kilabalala, in the principles.
So when I look under the principles.
Clause K and L.
Eh, clause K and L.
Um, eh, buesa khanyana, eh, an integrated climate change response, which requires the encouragement of public awareness of climate change, causes and impacts, and the promotion of participation and action at all levels.
Eh, balaha fa no fa ka hori. Eh, di khato za ho tse bo kala, eh, zedi ko banetu enza ho tse bo kala di peto kaya mayemo aluapi, zedi kha kankora, ho toka fa diwe, eh, lohona ba ka ba tu, le cho lo, temoso ka ha di peto kaza, eh, mayemo aluapi, lohore kilo di fito, ta zedi ba ka ma tata, ano, le ho barutwe za horu ba ze, karula lohosa khato, mo di karula nzo, kese di amananleyo ne.
Eh, ke za horu, that speaks to change management.
So, ke za ya, um, what I think is that, lo seno zedi buaka khanya horu, zedi khato za ho tisadi peto.
Eh, so we need to make a paradigm shift, more youth nyaro na, re ba, kati lohola salimeti.
So we have to really move our young ones, because now they have to be actually, eh, helped to do this while they still have energy.
Eh, ri fitla moro na ba ho lumba one.
Eh, so that when it comes to us, they are older ones.
It's already instilled and it, it's within their way of life.
Eh, be lohoro.
Eh, re banse ba ho la.
Eh, be lohoro, khato tarabolotzeno, basete ba diiti bile ba, basete ba hona ho di tole di sasapé.
Itla mitigate things like littering.
Selo seno sese tla fedisa le, eh, ho sa itse ho balale ho kwaala, katala jo tu.
Eh, ka utla ba buo, ba, ba bui ba ro na ba ba fidile, mbalala tata, ka khanya, littering, and, um, ishiya horu, hona, any form of, uh, refuse or waste management, especially in our rural areas.
Therefore, going speakers have already mentioned the fact that there is a lot of littering, there is no management of that, and it is actually causing a problem. We don't have people who are taking the responsibility as far as that is concerned.
Eh, and the following clause, uh, for the sake of not wasting time, kaku e bala, but i, it goes back to kanyen, zeki bua horu, let us be inclusive. Eh, ri sumula from elementary level, this change management, who ya, uh, hufi chala to the eldest, uh, person in the community.
And then the next clause, I won't read it for the sake of time. Yo ne, i bia fa no fa ka khanya hori. Eh, harika simula seno, ho sa leha le, eh, eritloho, hona hona le ba thwaba, hona hinaka nyamo, ho za di khato, tarabololo, mo, ho, ho, hona ho meka meka na le bu tata jono.
Thank you. And then, um, chapter two.
Me hara zena mo ka olon tu.
Where we're talking about forums.
Eh, e bucha, ne, bua ka di fora amo.
Uh, this is where it's an opportunity again, horu.
Seno sir na yachu lo kape ya hori.
Um, our youth should be part of those forums.
Ho ba, shabar na ba hona ho, za karula mo di fora bundu.
Eh, kialu buch.
Thank you.
Molweni. Salocha.
Uh, greetings.
Ay, sa chuka re, akilu bues ko sa, kitla buas twaana. Hmm, mi buka chuka re. Ay, kitla buka stwaana. Hmm, sa chuka. Uh, le re kibe tamazopi.
Let me, let me applaud you first.
Uh, why it's so, why kibe tamazoha monana?
So do you know why I'm applauding?
Ki lebe leze paralame de kache guka ma chuk, ki, me onka ba tsu na kadiya ta kache gufa kilimte.
Is because I am seeing parliament live in front of my own eyes.
Nseki ba sheva, ki ba bo na mo TV mona.
I've only been seeing them on TV.
Eh, ne, ke sa ho lu ho, one day, ki ta imapila bo na ka ba bo na ka ma chuk.
I never believed that one day I would find myself standing before you and actually looking at you.
At last.
Ko bu fe lo.
Kinali bo na kache.
Eh, here they are with me.
Eh, sama tomu.
Now firstly.
Ki tro na odi mo ha bo na, ba paralame.
So I am going to say this to you parliamentarians.
Uh, entwaya, yeah, documenti, ko buaka documentari, eh, eh, little inka yo na kache.
So this document that you actually brought with yourselves today.
Twenty-seven pages, eh, I'm, I'm right, or twenty-eight?
I think it's twenty-seven or twenty-eight pages, I'm not sure if I'm right.
Uh, kenya nitad.
Is very small.
Eh, mutu omu lo, omuwe, boat, ba talibali mte mona, ba ka emela ba buaka yo na eh.
So everyone, single in each and everyone who are here who'd like to stand up and speak about it.
Without.
Eh, without reading.
Because tava ikre ileka na, kwa iba rida, i prefer ile ko hayata, mona atse boru buaka eh.
Because they would have received it in time, gone through it, read, understood it, and come here knowing exactly what they want to talk about.
O ikre ya ka ten two, o tsa jai ba ri in ten minutes' time, and then add them to explain, or, ah, ah, muhe nemla oto in, in, eh, implement one, kain tya sa.
But now the problem is that they come here, eh, and then within the next ten minutes, they have just received it, they must read it, and now they are being told to make sure whether they want to support or not support that bill.
And they do so, so, he zero buangatso na kamu, re la katso na kamu, kedi doza se, eh, deliver.
And most of the things that we are actually complaining about within here are related to service delivery.
Suwa.
Eh.
Kuna le mukansela ra.
Kala le, le, salama twaana, re le mukansela ra.
Kamba si, re na le mukansela ra kaha eh.
And then, ni ko kamba si, re na le mo le khotla omuwe.
Yes, me, omuwe ka ba ba, so di ba ba, ngabuile ka, ka di ka.
And then some actually spoke about trees.
Yes, di tariso ra di ba tla ba thwaba agrico.
Because, um.
Agriculture.
Eh, because the trees also need to be worked with by people who actually are agriculture oriented.
Cause kiwa na ba ziban di tarisa maleva.
Because they are the ones who actually know the trees.
Horu se, ras katta, ras tusasea, sa swadleha, sa kokeha, kapase si ra, di planga, kapase si ra, eh, kiwa na ba baitzinkadi loze.
They know that this one, we can cut and remove it, this one should not be touched, so they actually know exactly how trees work and actually what are their benefits.
Eh, esof na kenna, eh, Richard Peba, Mututlu.
My name is Richard Peba from Mututlu.
Ward twenty-one.
In ward twenty-one.
Eh, ah, uski ba, me omuwe na bua monana.
Miss Kiba, eh, who spoke just not too long.
Eh, u, u iti ma emo ako Mututlu.
Knows very well the situation in Mututlu.
Eh, nde Mututlu, ki muti nyana, omuinyanifela, omuinyanana ho lo.
And, and Mututlu is a very, very small village.
But the situation ako Mututlu is very bad.
Me fela ma emo ako Mututlu one, ama suka.
Re ra ibupa ro na, re ba, aheba Mututlu, ra, cleanara, eh, everything, rezama, go akumudite, yo nine to eh, eh, planet change.
We formed ourselves into a group as Mututlu people, and then seeing what we could do to try and clean up, trying to avoid the climate change consequences.
Because of, eh, municipality waro na, esof, eh, buise smume ona mona, ubuile ga yo na, even municipality, wa ka mo Madibé municipality, au mo good, eh, 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 in, eh, what's called, au mo good extending, ka, ka buo na in pep, aru bo lela ka di za pep.
Kala ba kala horu, hona le mutoyo ne, abu akamasepala waro na ako Mututlu, a chalosa horu, the situation with that municipality leaves much to be desired.
So, le na ki realo, ki, eh, eh, kahe ki bo ne ba thwaba paralame de kache, ki tabi, ki tabi le tata, ki tumeta ho lo, and then eh.
So I would like to say, I am very, very pleased for having seen the parliamentarians today.
Kiya te pa le, loya limula ichakan ni te ko paralame te ngwale.
I trust that you are going to take our message back to the parliament.
Because twenty sixteen, eh, neki eme fa ke eme mte mo, eh, eh, president waro na Ramaphosa, na alifa le, honali nitata fe.
Because in twenty sixteen, I was standing on this very same spot, and at that particular time, President Ramaphosa was right there addressing us.
Ntsotsena na adibuaka wa ha twenty sixteen, le kache wa zanga ka di bo na le ka liha.
The things that he said were going to be done in twenty sixteen have not been seen happening to this day.
And, eh, kana ku na, we was fighting to Ramaphosa ka na mo la, and I cannot solve a man we amata, but they failed it.
At that time, everybody was pushing for him to be there, eh, for him to be able to solve those problems, but none has been solved.
This and that. And then harit zolo hori di lozo duwe zahala ngwahaman.
And here you are, again you have come and you are mentioning, enumerating different things that this should be done, that should be done. We don't know whether these things are actually going to happen.
Intelligence yaluapi. Wa ngan tozena zao li luapi leli tshila fizi kumutwa yanskolonga, twaskolonghabuwa yada arisetsha this thing. Bia no iye namutu. Otiyana kuwe kanakana, arisetsha this thing.
The person obviously who has to deal with that climate must go to school, must study and research and see what are the interventions. How how long is this person going to take actually to be able to bring up the solutions?
Kikale hubele hubele luaka yonap planet change. But that, how how it's an elite.
So so eh 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 but climate change is a very longstanding topic and there hasn't been any change to this day.
Kache kusla just like a numuka.
Fela jaka ko munoka.
Numuka. Tinjofela nitweni la ya dugu ninti.
Or or this is just like a mist in other words.
So are it is eh this thing eh eh reality or is something else eh agisi.
So we don't really know. Asolosene sotota, kineti kozaki, we just don't know.
So I I wish eh eh litaya la buela marahu kwanana, eh raya bua lebona, la babo lella, la bua mu la tla la la refadino zanit.
So we wish and we hope that you'll go back, you're gonna communicate with them, come back to us and give us something real. Hope.
Kala boh.
Thank you.
Good day everyone.
Dumelamba khaezo.
Okay, my name is Karabelo Maduko.
Lina lama nte Karabelo Madukum.
I'm from Ward five.
Kitzaku Ward five.
Which falls under Moses Kotani Local Municipality.
Me yone iwe laka fata saham masapala wasele khaya wa Moses Kotani.
Eh we do have concerns.
Erenalima tzwinyeho.
We accept the climate change bill.
Ere amukala blakomo oluwa eh petohoya maemo aluapi.
But we do have concern regarding the public participation.
Merenalima tata ailohra amana loho zaga rolo hamaloko asachaba.
Now, in line with our concerns expressed,
Jano ngutubalanong lematzwinyeho akia khalosa.
The bill only allows for a veneer of public participation,
Malakomo olu ulitabatubale muka wanyana fela.
Which substantively amounts to little more than sharing information about decisions that have already been taken on behalf of the marginalized and excluded.
Ilen khorose felle sa kahoro kudiro di tshwezo, tedi seka inyana fela, tedi sa agarazza batubale banzi meditwetze tseu, didira jana tebangle batoba elen khorre eh ba nebanze bakha peta kwa toko.
Now, if the intention of the of the bill is to facilitate a just transition,
Jano hay lohoru bi kala loba blakomo olu oti kudira khaza, just transition.
Then it fails this mali to provide for a just and equitable process for communities who are impacted by the extractive and emission processes.
Denohora khoru ya paluwa tota, kuchilele kuchisata ba tutsiyami, so batoba elen khorre ba amu da katsala eki bu khotata, kiripeto khaza ma emo ah.
Now, any public consultation that does not allow affected and impacted communities to enjoy the full legal right of free prior and informed consent,
Jano eh di kokuanu dipefela za khoru batoba ze karo lomohozo ne medisa bali, ke khoru banne lese abe kabotalo katsusuluho.
And which instead reduces them to subject who will be told what has been decided on their behalf.
Eh ilen kanya khoru batoba no ba hubele lebona, kase lo se kusatse kundzu kudiro le tshwezo kasona, idira mobo emonja boni.
Is fundamentally unjust and does not provide a pathway out of the destructive patterns of the past.
Ki busa khotu loho khatya miso, ibilesenis hasa batamileka koro yabo uzo, ya khoru batoba tatinga eh buzo yana kuwe efidile ya khotoka tya miso.
Now accordingly, we propose a strengthening of the public participation element to include.
Jano serabatla kusitsi jamalebanala kozaga rolo hamaloko asachaba, etwanezo kona sasa agarazang.
Number one.
Zancha.
Decisions affecting communities must be based on principles of self determination.
Eh di tshwezo tse ilen khoru didira tebangle maloko asachaba, di tswanezo khoru didiro jalo moraho ha di tseka tseiko, tedi tenele tza ma emo ah boni.
It is the collective right of indigenous people to negotiate the terms of externally imposed policies.
Batoba elen khorre, batolo kilemole felonlelele, banale tswane lo ya khoru ba ka buaka kanya di tshwezo, mo koli di polisi tedi didiruwe.
Programs and projects that directly affect their livelihoods and well being.
Ilengi porojeke mo koli manane wa ailohora amaka chamalala, matshilo abona didiroza bo.
Now, number two, public participation should be a form of decision making that enables a community to say yes or no to a proposed project or intervention.
Jano sabu bedi ke khoru di kokuanu zabo se chaba tedi tswanale tze nize, etwanezo kona tse mo kuto ne kudira di tshwezo tedi lekambato. Khoru ba dumalane, kozaba khanane eh didi porojeke tse ilen khoru di tswanezo kona tseu, di kaba solakala mulemo.
Number three.
Yaburaro.
Public participation should ensure that consent is given freely by people fully informed of the consequences prior to any decision being made and according to their own decision making processes.
Di tswan di di tshwezo tedi di kokuanu tedi tswanale tze nize, di tswanezo kudira kala khorre. Khoelo khotopelo khoru batoba ne watse di musezo katsusuluho. Ilen tse di musezo eh idira jana itayu lo mo kijonge ilen khoru banale yone, loho itloho ba amakasa la insenjana.
Number four, which is the last factor.
Me yabo ne ilen klayabo fele.
Public participation should be a part of a consultation process that allows people to provide in input into how their natural resources are managed.
Eh di kokuanu tedi tswanale tze nize za maloko asachaba, etwanezo kona tedi nayamba tu chunu ya khalosa khoru ba kara ta khoru di zompe loza khaho, didiri suelokolala kamo khaonzenjana.
This is Adam Karabelo Maduko from Kralu, Ward five, thank you.
Ke narre Maduko khotzaku eh Ward five, kala boh.
Greetings, greetings everybody.
Dumelamba khaezo.
I want to appreciate this invitation from the portfolio committee.
Kiana na na talazo eh zo angko komitingeno ya portfolio.
My name is Lindobulle David Nene.
Ke na red Lindobulle David Nene.
I'm from the organization called Makua Wamuwa and I'm based in Rustenburg.
Me kitzako mo khatlowa Makua Wamuwa eh me ki moa kwa Rustenburg.
Chairperson, we want to express our submission to this bill and we want to further alert you that we do acknowledge this bill.
Mudi dasdilo rebatla kuchisa di tswanleza roana malebanale mo la otomo onu, me san khan khaeza batla kobelela khorre eh ridumalana le mo la otomo onu.
I want to further submit my submission however would be so critical.
Me eshabe kwa kati kisi di tswanleza me kahona di bu khotata.
Will be part of access to information.
Eh di malebana lipitele ya tse di musezo.
The bill proposes that any information that is provided to the government must be made available to the public subject to the promotion of access to information which is called PAIA.
Me eh eh mo eh mo la obuwa otsa khorre eh tse di musezo, iphefela ilo khorre eh zo angpozo, etwanezo khoru ifikela leke ba ahi, kwa akamo la wa PAIA.
Now, our concern in this regard is that the framing of that laws does not allow effective implementations.
Jano matzwinyeho aruna ke khorre jano, kahona eh selo se sototele tza khoru, konele tsi kusengwa diluso kha mo la onu.
The PAIA Act and the POBIA Act have a legal ground to refuse providing information such as commercial grounds.
Kahona mo la wa PAIA, mo koli wa POBIA, onale eh mothe wa khoru motwaka kana konsa tse di musezo kha kaya private.
Now, it is our experience having engaged with multiple corporate entities on environmental and social economic concern.
Me jano ere karilera eh lira dirisa na le eh me kato eh farloha ne, elen khorre eh ame kha mori khenza tsa tikuluhu.
Is that the entities who do not wish to share information that communities need to protect their right often abuse this privilege.
Kahona eh relemukile khoru di tayu diwe, tse di sa batla konsa tse di musezo, etwaneze bona ke ke ba ahi baschab. Ba dirisa mo la wana onu khoru baske ba ba abakasi di musezo.
Moreover, the required procedure by PAIA and POBIA Act to obtain information is time consuming and costly for those seeking information and it's even more for so marginalized and affected communities.
Me sesewa kape eh tama iso ya PAIA ya POBIA, ya kubana tse di musezo, etanakui inti bileya maria manzi. Me seno se khorre leza batoba lo khorre eh habana ma eh habana mo kalkalu, khoru ba kono kufikela le tse di musezo eh.
Now, we want to express that this clause is too vague.
Jano rebatla khoru retla retla lo se khorre mo la wana onu kha kha kawatlamalala.
The word used to this clause may be understood that the availability of information to general public is at the discretion of those who hold power over decision making processes.
Koka tse wa khorre mo la wa mo la wana onu ora khorre eh tshwezo ya khorre eh tse di musezo, etla ntiwa kozza eh etla fikela leke ba tchaba we, ike ehile ke ba tchaba bananidi lita.
Chairperson, it is our submission that all information relevant to affected and impacted communities must be available as they are right.
Jano mudi dasdilo rebatla khotwa yala kahore tse di musezo, ya bu khotwa lelo khorre eh ama ba ahi, etwanezo khorre etle eh abiwe.
Lastly, I want to humbly express our consent.
Labo fele ke batla khorre ke tse matzwinyeho aruna.
The request number one is.
Kopo yan tsekieno.
Climate changes affects everybody and that climate change bill will 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 have a great impact on how South Africa responds to climate change.
Tya miso ya eh ya yama emo aluapi, mo koli dipeto khaza, eh kococozza dipeto khaza ma eh tama emo aluapi, ditlo kha ma fela tata ba ahi ba fukaboo.
We request that elements of free PAIA informed consent be brought into a bill to ensure that extensive and effective public participation hearings are held during the lawmaking process and behind that.
Jano rikuela khorre tse di musezo, otsa kha kori kopa no, etle enele ba tupe le kopa no, khoru ba kono kwe sekasek. Kahona kafabadi ra jalo, na batakona kotsenyala tso kmo kete chile, eh mo eh kudiro ne kha mo la.
The request number two reads as follows.
Eh kopo ya bu bedi ke ehno.
The hearing should be held widely across the country so that all communities especially marginalized and primitive vulnerable have a voice and are heard.
Di kokuanu di tswanzo khoru di tshware khoru ralala naha yo tli, ele khorre ba ahi ba ba we, balo khoru khabai ke belo kozza, habana se eh khabana kohokalu, lebona ba ka kona khoti sa kozza konsala eh la mo tlapitu.
Notice of public hearing must be shared well in advance and the venues where the hearing would be held must be accessible to rural areas.
Kitiso ya kopa na se chaba mo koli lefele la kopa no ehno, etwanezo intiwe pele kana koo, elen khoru batoba tli ba kona kui tse koi egwaga. Me khabeli di kopa na tse di tswanzo khoru di tshware lekwa mitsesela kaini.
The cha- the request number three is as follow.
Kopo ya bohuraro ke ehno.
The youth are generally neglected in lawmaking processes.
Hansi bashaba kapela toko, fahu durame la.
Women and youth are mostly vulnerable to the impact of climate change and the youth and women should be prioritized in their interest in incorporated of this bill.
Basadi le basha ke bona ba ba ame khan ba ba ame khan tata fahu duramo eh petohoya ma emo aluapi, me ke bona ba lo khoru ba tswanzo khoru ba kanyediwe, iwe leba be kwa eh kwa pele fahu durame la eh amana le petohoya ma emo ah luapi.
Request number four, chairperson.
Kopo ya boh ne mudi dasdulo.
Information must be easily accessible to the public in a language that is clear, easily and understood by everybody.
Ba ahi ba tswanzo khoru ba bona tse di musezo mo tchofu. Kapuwa eh lo khoru ba kona kui etla loha nyamotchofu, loho eh ya ka kapuwa ba kona kui etla loha nyamotchofu.
And as Makua Wamuwa, we submit that this right should be clearly sought out in this bill.
Me rona jaka Makua Wamuwa eh eh re re tshweala kahore eh tswanelo ehno, etwaneze ekwa la kachamalala mo la otomo onu.
Now, lastly, chairperson.
Me labo fele mudi dasdulo.
Regarding the timeline, regarding the new timeline for provisions such as compelling the minister to set the timeframe for emission and tragedy risks.
Eh jano ereka eh fafa fahu duramo nako eh bele khorre kudira kadiwe. Eh tona kahona kana nako elen khoru obetu ya no khoru ra didira kati di le tze, no malebanale lipeto khao, kozza riteka nyese tze no za ma emo aluapi.
We urge the lawmakers to include timeframes on the determination of reduction of pathways that manages greenhouses and gases emissions.
Eh 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 rikuela mo ba didira mo la khoru, batla ba bena koe koli bele tzo khorre eh me la ehno malebanale eh konsa eh mo ya okoti mo luapi, lele tse di musezi di amama emo ah petohoya luapi, etle ete we.
I thank you and I appreciate the stand.
Ra leboh, me ke lebohalele tzu no ehno.
Eh dumelamba kholo.
Good day ladies and gentlemen.
Ya emenfaki tumelo maname, khotzaku Kralu, Ward five.
My my name is Dumelo eh maname from Ward five.
Ke omongwalilokola Makua Mauma.
I'm a member of Makua Mauma.
Eh kitlo koman da ka the laws and regulations tedi mababili climate change bill.
I would like to comment on the laws and regulations with regard to climate change bill.
Makua in northwest region suggests that the laws and regulation of the climate change bill be nine twenty two.
Eh Makua Wamuwa eh akansha khorre me la ya me eh malebanale lele petohoya ma eh ma emo aluha aluapi ya twenty two.
Should be enforced more strongly to ensure that mining companies comply with their responsibilities.
Etwanezo khoru ete ngwe dirison katsela ete nize koto misa khoru, di company za mo ebo di kona kudira khaza ma ikarabelo atzo ne.
In mitigating and adapting the climate change.
Mo ho mo 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 kote re kanyi loho meka meka na le dipeto khaza ma emo ah luapi.
The communities may emphasize that mining companies should be held accountable for their contribution to greenhouse gas emissions.
Me rafe tswanezo khoru reha tellele khoru di company tze no za me ebo, di tswanezo khoru di karabelo loho tsyanya le tso khoru, mo kuntiwe kha mo ya oh eh oh koti mo luapi.
And may negative impact of their operations on their environment and public health.
Le khoru didiroza eh di kamo raho tse di semona tse di tiroza tza 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 tzeo ne, tedi among eh we tekanelo justchab.
Looking on the climate change bill be nine twenty two.
Far reba eh ona mo la otomo onu wa petohoya ma emo aluapi.
We as Makua.
Rona re le Makua.
We would like to highlight the following factors.
Rebatla kohatelele di tsa tse di lata la.
Factor number one, environmental protection.
Eh nchaya nchake tsi rele tzea tikuluhu.
We plead that the bill should address better environmental protection to mitigate the negative impact.
Eh re eh re re tshweala kahore, koshanezo kona le tsi rele tze eh toka fetenyati kuluhu, ele khoru re kona kona meka meka na le ma emo eh lele petohoya ma emo aluapi.
Of mining activities on the environment and health community members.
Eh ba kwan ki di roza mo ebo, tedi amambu itekanele kwa ba ahi, ba 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 morafi.
Factor number two.
Nchaya ya bu bedi.
Clean energy incentives.
Eh kundi eh maduwa ah 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 pa.
The bill should also include provision for promoting clean energy.
Mo la otomo otsa tso khoru otsa otsenyeho nchah khoru, konele tshu tshwezo ya koba tla kona le eh ah ah pa.
Technologies in the mining industry.
Eh di technology mo industry ehno ya me ebo.
And incentivizing mining companies to adopt sustainable and low carbon practices.
Le kofa eh di company za ma eh za 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 me ebo maduwa, philo khoru ba fukudi tse kuntiwa kha kabo kha kamo ya kabo ne mo luapi.
Factor number three.
Nchaya ya bohuraro.
Makua submit that the bill facilitate the transformation of the mining.
Eh Makua eh eh tshweala kahore, mo la otomo otsa tso khoru oka mele eh didiro tse di didira kwa me ebo.
In a sustainable and low carbon economy that preserves the economy.
Mo ekonomi eh lo khoru eh kuntiwa kha di xasi, eh kohua tlaasi loho kona li ekonomi eh tse tse peti.
And social development of communities through just transition plans.
Me kape konele tshabulolo ya eh ya luha kozza ya ba ahi, eh kahu dirisuwa kha just transition plans.
The last one, community participation.
Me ya bu fele kozza karo loha ba ahi.
The bill should include provision for meaningful community participation in climate change.
Mo la otomo otsa tso khoru otsa otsa lo se kachamalalo, botloka jaa kozza karo lohasachaba.
Decision making process.
Mo koli kona le se abe mori mo kudiro kha di tsebezo.
As community should be informed and consulted on the impact of mining activities.
Re le morafi tswanzo khoru re tsiweka di kamo raho eh eta didiroza mo ebo.
On their lives and environment.
Me loho di amaja malala eh eh matshilo ah ah boni, lele tikuluhu ya boh.
Kala boh.
Thank you.
Madume ba kholo.
Good day ladies and gentlemen.
I am Mr. Tavo Matibi.
I am Mr. Tavo Matibi.
Otoa Matibi Statea.
Eh Mr. Matibi from Matibi State.
Otoa getu ni fo ya Moriteli District.
What uni fo Moriteli District.
Datetlaminie hayre mi shafanu ubulete kase fela sa rungena na.
Eh when Mr. Tlamini was standing, he he.
Kefan Noah Aha Areka.
That was when Noah was building an ark.
Kase siwa ka areka etwanezo aha kipuso ya rona.
Now, this ark is supposed to be built by our government.
Eh ne mo Noah ere ho zena fela, zena lela balaha oja ka olimusi ami.
And Noah was told that you and your family alone should enter the ark.
Palamente ya rona ele ba siami.
Ah ah.
Amen.
Okay.
Kase siwa ka, kitlo buaka climate change eh ba buangayo na.
Now, at this moment, I'd like to talk about the climate change that was mentioned.
Na onore koyaka eh linti ngilifati.
My one and only concern is regarding land.
Koba le lefati lele linti ni reale abela ba we abale abelu.
Because eh the land that you have.
Eh le tlamini ragitahan.
Eh the land that's be that we are allocated, some get it, some don't. And we are, we 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 reside in this, we are packed in a small area.
Morikitahanin mo, morikitahanin. Ke solufela eh lo na climate change eh idira koba ne rehoza milo kabunti barona.
And where we are conscious that, I believe that that is where climate change occurs because we make fire in in numbers.
Se kisibuwa ngikwa jana kele mrua kumu, ke la kala fati.
I speak as a livestock farmer and I'm and I'm pleading crying about the land.
Le fati lava ruakumu lenela ba we ba maloko arona.
The land for livestock farmers is only given to a certain kind of people.
Di tare diakapiwa mori sa tswanela unho kapiwa.
Trees are cut in areas where they're not supposed to be cut.
Hanagi holane bare holali tare tse tswan tse tdi sa tswanela unho katiwa, koba ne geto na tedi protecta le fati.
When I grew up, I was taught that there are certain trees that should not be cut because they are the ones that are protecting our environment.
Mara haribona lefati lele mo la rotoma mikuku.
But then when you see a land, we're thinking of erecting sheks.
Ra lebala khoru agrigi ke pati ya bu pelo barona.
We forget that agriculture is part of our lives.
Reja agriculture.
We eat.
Reabara agriculture.
We are clothed through agriculture.
Fela government de gopa air protector khoru, rokono kho kho jarokono hapara.
So we are playing with the government to protect us so that we can eat and be clothed.
Oba ne gobufelungu retroka sao ja le sao wa para.
Because at the end of the day, we're going to need what eh something to eat and something to clothe ourselves with.
Gaofa batu lefati lele sa tso batwane la.
If you give unqualified people the land.
Kitlo ba mukutuane, kere kala boha. Eh ne ere sidigake nja pedi hasi tata. Let's imma letta ta kamonwa alona, amen.
In short, eh I would like to to say thank you. And then, and then to mention that if we work together, we could be prosperous.
Akahutla khoru, amen, datu luri le amen.
Amen to that.
Sidigwa genja pedi hasi tata, uruli konnarabu zaman. Wa deba oru chori, oh oh umutwile wa mthaloka. Okay. Nori mitra. Oh. Datet kokopani le datet laminie.
Eh sir, please meet with Mr. Mr. Tlamini.
Kono mthalosi tsa khoru, sidigwa genja pedi hasi tata lele tse male tata kamonwa ala khoru.
And explain the problem.
Arwa kuka mara kothaloka. Lausumuloguakutile oguakan Noah le areka.
Wait, when you started.
Ekisaba tla kotsaka khoru motivinbe, kizala kona kotsaka khoru oguale motorong. Oh 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 kahutla khoru ya kudi vesa nse sirasa, haushem. Ah. Munamudi ma, ahh, hukutinex.
Okay, eh thanks very much. If we are all agreeable, eh we should close.
Re lebohile kominachana, me philo kora dumalana, eh ke ke akanya kora rezo alefa.
Radumala.
Do we agree?
Eh sidigwa genja pedi hasi tata eh ayere kialuma, ayere odula mole, bugu kali tso khoru, we kobo za orma zapadiya zaga.
Eh this is how we work, ma'am, you sit there and raise your hand, then eh I'll ask you, what is the issue?
Eh ma letengakirinikide if we are agreeable.
Me kape kenakare, philo kora radumala.
Eh arasa, na akonakoki jahetin, tenibila kina stressa mandag, leka sixinga za maya. Eh eh batu baba jahimba, kibale la itiya ka. Banale butata bola. Eh bola, eh ma olade. Reka organiza lemaspala refali di kuu. Ra robal, me, what a word, let me change. Okay, let me check if there are other hands.
Ke kokopana philo kona di atlatse di we.
Okay, then it should be the only hand. Is it two?
Ke kona di atlatse pedi.
I don't see the other one. Oh there, yeah, then it will be you ma'am and you sir.
Etana we na me le we na ra.
You'll be the last.
Kueno etana wa bufer.
Again. La ya keme lerre.
Tsa ke dumeri siem palamente. Orin ke leboh empalamenta kache ku.
So I want to thank eh the parliament today.
Tsa ke leboh eka libizo la Jesu Christo.
And then I want to thank them in the name of Jesus our Lord.
Ke leboh kha khoru, li dirile di ruwe kholu tata.
I want to thank you for a great job that you have done.
Yo buang oke rosinama kuela, oh twenty one matebeli.
So speaking here is Rose.
Rosina Makuela.
Rosina Makuela, Ward thirty eight matebeli.
Ward twenty one matebeli.
Ward twenty one matebeli.
Nali na kache kole kidumela nalulona kabili ya lo na.
I actually in agreement with you concerning your bill.
So se wonsa khoru pisoyaro na itemo kala khoru rebuthoka, mo kubona.
So this actually shows that our government consider us as important to them.
Eh mutlame chinching.
When it comes to climate change.
Na koplekenya ko matebelen kinali problem.
I have a problem in our matebeli area.
Honale mine wa Vametko.
There is a Vamect ba Vamecto Mine.
Oil on khoru urkiseza votata.
It is actually bringing us lots of problems.
Har na di tse la mo kona.
So we don't have roads around it.
Kha luadiwa mometin esarundi. Kha luadiwa.
And then people are sick actually in the surrounding villages.
Kamocharika mine wa Vametko.
And then within Vamecto Mine.
Palamente.
The parliament.
Ke kokopale tze neng kamocharika mine wa Vametko.
Please come into the inside of Vamecto Mine.
Ito krea di kumu zawonka temu kuluaro na.
You are going to find the cattle there of our forefathers.
Hale ready, 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 ready luela, ready ba.
So we have been fighting for them, looking for them.
Bar tse pisahora batara na di kumuza rona.
And they promised us that they will give their hand our cattle back to us.
Ibilin tate mo kuluaka osu lelusola kumu.
And my grandfather actually died due to the issues related to cattle.
Abolokala hanamo matebele mole sakendla di komoza ha.
And was buried in Matebele within the quarrel of his own cattle.
Kamocharehamainu oh.
So within that mine.
Honali meti kiha lekua.
There is a river water over there.
Metzia le baranale poison.
So it looks like it's a poisonous water.
Itzera babolala hura di komoze liberaka yan katona.
When we ask them as to what are you going to do with this cattle?
Bar blalala hura gehedi suli.
They said as if they are dead.
Badi epel.
They actually bury them.
Kandeka badi epel.
Only to find that they didn't bury them.
Tedi ntsatona gehedi suli.
Some of them after they died.
Badi latela mo yonale teu ya roona.
Actually they throw them right on that.
Honali substance ki eke tue.
There is some white substance.
Ke dusty.
It's actually, it's a dusty material.
Dusti ewu itzoh hanakamote.
So it comes from within there.
Ekopanili di plastiki.
And then it's mixed up with plastics.
Battebe bayo, bayo hola.
And then they gather each together.
Bay dampa hanamo le fatin lola ro nalio.
Dumping it on our land.
Le onama rapo adi kahotza di komo.
And then also bones that are actually cow hairs and stuff.
Rabaruakomu parlament.
We, we are livestock farmers parliament.
Di komo ditabe di chadi, chadi plastiki.
And our cows actually eat plastic.
And then ditabe di swadi bulaki plastiki. Habadi bua batle bakra di plastiki kamochare.
And then they die due to eating plastic. In fact, even when they are slaughtered then they do find plastics within their stomachs.
So hanavya nombiana.
So at this moment.
Ki bona ilohura livestocko ya rona ilen kamoli.
I think our livestock which is there.
Ya safara.
Is suffering a lot.
Hura itzue kamoli.
So for each to come out of that area.
Parlament.
US Parliament.
Kikopalirutusi.
I'm asking you for your help.
Karababolala hura kiha bona.
Because they say it is there yes.
Enne bay kampeti. Di komo di tonu ameti alen kamote.
And they have fenced in so the cow will only drink the water which is found within there.
Kamovemetco hona honali di kout.
So within Vemetco there were holes.
Before bakatena bakampel.
So before they actually came and fenced around.
So di komote nediea di onu ameti koté.
So cows used to go there and have a drink there.
Di bua di noa, di bua fela ya.
Back and forth for a drink just like that.
Kamakoi itzehabatena.
And when they came at one point.
Bakampel.
So they fenced the whole area.
Fensi ele yanna hapeli di patla.
And then the fence developed some holes also.
Dinti di swadi tena.
And they kept on escaping through that back and forth.
Katu 2005.
And then in 2005.
Kheba, kheba bakampela silt.
Now they put a fence around which was actually quite a good ceiling.
Parlament di komoza rona ya safara.
So parliament, our cows' cattle is suffering.
Kikopalirutusi.
So please help us.
Sabobe di hanano.
Now, the second point right now.
Mole fatin lele la ro nalile.
In our land where we are.
Honali di guarri bakai so.
There is.
Honali di guaris. Di guari, di guari di, di, di guari di di tuam matlapa.
Oh yes, so there are quarries over there?
Eske problemi. Lisona habatunia, batunia di dalmates abona.
So it is a problem when they do blasting operating their dalmites?
Di, 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 di krekisa di ntu.
So our house start cracking?
Ibilaha pe, ma bita, ma bitaralu kete matlapa kregila uel.
And then the, the graves which actually have tombstones, half their tombstones fallen over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gimelan bakai so.
Greetings ladies and gentlemen.
Nagibidua Masoka Selo. Hotzale fatina kra luk word five.
My name is Masoka Selo from.
Ground five. Word five.
From word number five.
Again leboh, leksaleboh. Ujekewana parliamente lebawagatlamenchanchi. Kuta wutukota da because hakona netefu.
Let me thank you for, for having come over to us because I want to say that as parliament coming here to speak to us about climate change, there is nothing that you are speaking to us which is the truth.
Because kat 2015.
Because in 2015.
Ki rikazamile motame chanchi.
I dealt with climate change.
But ahaona sepesesi di lahetengada sesi di la nuwachata di la hunpi. It's now seven years.
Now, nothing.
Hakona changes.
Nothing happened. There are no changes. It is now a seventh year.
Then khekesake lebela sente ki buela komorau.
So now when I look back very carefully.
Ki lebela kabosisi John Rhodes, Saint Martins.
I look at Sir John Rhodes, Saint Martins.
Katlamenchanchi uha isimulohona ya.
So related to climate change in those days, it doesn't start now.
Hona acta tenyarikanakoin edira 359 Act of 1891.
Because the act there was Act number 359 1881.
Then sunaso says there still nsebatama osona habasi fa po habase yonensebatlamenchanchi.
So from.
But haba fa po ukuawa hakona divarantbi tri.
So from right at that time, they've been talking and talking about climate change. There hasn't been any difference or any change. It has been just on it.
Now, take take ke, take ko, ko sekis ketemufa. Take take ko sekis ketemufa ya na.
Now let me actually say what I have come here to say.
Eh, gukezwan ten, kiri kanse ki maina lime, kenale mainua cemente, kenale mainua platina.
So where I am, I'm surrounded by three mines, lime, platinum, and cement.
Then honali korlele fo, nagona koe mule motowa nale, loa pilena le, ukasabone loa.
So from time to time when you look up into the skies, actually you can see the blue sky.
Because the rolele falili ndi tata motemu.
Because it is dusty and cloudy up there.
And the rolele rete talio lenale, lenale boluezi, boloka skawa ollemu.
And those whatever particles, they've got a lot of diseases in them.
And then bona, bona le rolele ule, lenale, le, le pendele, lenale, le pooti.
Also it is full of some paint material and.
Pooti party.
Yeah, party, yes.
And then metiaran, di komo di noa metiaw.
So then the cattle actually drink water containing these things.
And then zapelo na le rona le rona le, lenale ko, lenale ko seywe ya di so, ya ba ba toba ba biwazo basadi so.
And then also it affects people when they drink it in that they develop a lot of sores in their body.
And apelo na le rolele uha pe leu no, loho ije di di jalo falu. Bulheka na ge matat, e buleni lena di di dinte, e buleni di aswa.
And also when it rains, this dust actually it condenses down onto the ground and then if you had beautiful plants, you'll see thereafter that they are now dying.
Guo tere di bitani bieris.
Things that we call the bierings?
Hasafe di lete, nble di fe di, le di tarzata rona zene ridepa zene ralafa batukazona. Haori bo ni because of what? Di, di gra, le rolele ndi tata, le rolele nale poison ile.
Some of the plants that we used to use to actually cure some illnesses of people, they are now extinct, no longer existing.
Now, sesungu hapasenana le so na ke, renale detoxis. Sere di risya angodi maine. Ha, batla metia la, fela epule na meti la za meti la, ah pushesa ko, koso seko eh, kodi ta, kodi tamonza ro na kwan. Ha, ba pushesa kodi tamonza ro na kwan, di komo di anafo, dewa aswa, di komo di ke di ya di, di ra sosena, di ra miscarriagei, di komo di nale, le konopki, konopkiris.
Now, one other problem that we have is that when it rains, you find that the water of the rain is being pushed towards the tailing dams of the mines and as it flows, it got to be drank by our cattle, our calves, and they die or they are not able to give birth to calves because of the effects of this.
Nana ngayti melala, hela utu afalo di rehasa, sere le regilizensona.
So I'll be very happy to make sure that you actually bring into fulfillment what you came here for.
Because kela taforuna fale rore do wa ta bonase karu.
Because you can't just come here and look for bonuses through us, at the expense of us.
Tamfor na le teleru onsor, tamfor na ka eh, climate exchange. Hora rirukubatwatsalauha nyana, sekontin sekisukopan, kitoko porare ngomizi.
Come here, make sure that people do get a good understanding pertaining to climate change and also I would like to invite you to come to the villages.
Sekenasi itume lan tata tata, ke rore halata la faru do, hela suafloka, ra bonase letena kwan.
So.
Senasi itume la moluna, garasatser leli taya na, nagletsi.
One thing that.
Because di diro na long time ago.
One thing that.
Maran, nothing happened.
One thing that you obviously are very happy for is that when you leave here, you are going to get bonuses at the expense of us. To be honest, I don't trust you. I don't trust you, but thanks anyway.
Right. Ra, ra leboha eh, bakai zumo Bojana.
Thank you very much, the people of Bojana La.
Relutui.
Well, we were listening.
Is Bojana La FM still here? Are we still live? Yeah, so that we, we say this thing on, on air and we can be kept.
Yeah, naritakala hura arasasaner lebo hasong, itzulete pele, ela horatara honohu bua, serabata horose bua, er le momo uen.
Eh, libaduambo Bojana La baru.
So that people in Bojana La can actually hear that.
We have listened to all the views that have been expressed here.
So reilerareza di twaylo, zo kete ela horu lulela di kahisa.
And it is not our duty to say that that view was correct or that one was incorrect.
Kajalo, hasibi kara balo barona hura rere eh twaylo ele, inele e siyaming, twaylo ele, inele e sa siyama.
Agrikas twayana hotama kohobon.
Because in Siswana they say hotama kohobona ne?
Eh, agui begas ko.
Whatever.
Yeah, to go is to see. Yeah.
It sounds so literal.
Okay, look. The, oh, let's start by welcoming Councillor Munzu.
Eh, ar amocheling, mole khotla Munzu?
I told her that she is very, very early.
Eh.
She is very early.
Oh yes, and gi neke, batla hori belala hori, o motou, ona gachochale, chohosale, haletata.
Yeah, for the next meeting.
Eh, kamanzoma ya kha liana, utilexata hala na koya kopanela tela.
And she might, we might, we might not even give her an opportunity to even greet or respond to anything because she did not hear anything.
So ra kanaras karamonacho, ne ya horu anses twaylo ephe fela, kosa huaraba sepe fela kahona ka ugas epe.
And she says she was ambushed to arrive here.
Me ar utisitu efano, gachochanezo, anasimo lenane wala te.
To come and welcome us, I guess it's from the mayor.
Eh, hotla horamu chela, hopatala ele ho zua horu ratoropo.
And we have that we are on air, me the mayor wayi is, it's here, he can hear us.
Me ritubela horu remomo uen, me ratoropo, eh, kuale hona, okona horu kua.
Eh, ri kamochetsi.
That we actually welcomed ourselves.
Eh, yakari kli terata itama is.
So as we brought ourselves here, we're gonna take ourselves out of this place.
Eh, we are, Councillor Munzu, we are at the end of our session.
Eh, remobo kuchonjua, eh, le kopanaya ro na, me mole khotla.
But we appreciate that you came finally.
Me ritubela fala tata hori, uilewa kona khotla.
Okazo ru tlegu radio lueno, uchobona motonsa kutumunleu.
So you may have heard in the radio being spoken that she's beautiful.
Eh?
You may have heard from the radio when it's been spoken that the person is beautiful.
Okay. Right, now, I want us to agree, the people of Madibing.
Ki batla horu du malanen kase uefa.
During the day when the sun is out like that, it is hot.
Monako nyamasahara haletzatele kha ibile yaana.
It is hot.
Eh, komo hoti.
And the surface attracts the heat.
And then eh, ra izohore, tikolo ho ismola imonia eh, komo hoti.
In the night when it is dark.
Me busiro fahuli lififi.
The surface is cool.
Eh, tikolo ho ea be iti di fe.
Are we agreeing?
Aradumalana.
Now. Are we agreeing?
Aradumalana.
Something really kofe like it? Right. Now, global warming ki e.
Janu, tutafalo ene ya le fatse ki e.
Honali, di, eh, ota itolog, kitai, kitai twayla lakas ko agoragi iti, maybe we are not agi iti. Eh, there's what we call fossil fuels.
Honali di lo tere di bita hori ki di tu kisi.
The, the unusual increase on our temperatures as a result of fossil fuels.
Eh, honali ko kete ho esen kanakasepe ya komo hoti, motikolo honya ro na kan kha di lo tere di bita hori ki di tu kisi.
Nuclear energy, coal, eh, oil, gas.
Mata anutlia, mahala, oli, lidihase.
And when they burn, they release what we call carbon dioxide.
So hadi tu kajalo, di nsa serisi bita hori ki carbon dioxide.
Into our air and the atmosphere.
Di kheela moten, momo uen, mole faufa unlaro.
This causes global warming.
So lo seno sasabaka tutafalo ya le fat.
You also spoke about the mines.
Hape luntuli buaka me epodi mine.
Eh, honali pollution ni itwa angodi miningte.
So. There is a lot of pollution coming from the mines, a lot of smoke that we see.
Eh, it pollutes our environment.
So it pollutes our environment.
Agir, nzeri kofe.
So are we together?
La talo hanyan horu, what causes this climate change?
So do you understand?
Agitray hori, hori indoctrinator.
What, what causes?
Iki try we basen bo.
Climate change, hara batla hori indoctrinator, bua fela di khaika hadinte.
And, and global warming, we cannot stop overnight.
Me eh, tutafalo ya le fat si ona, hasoso sasidira hang kaponali.
I agree with all the speakers that are saying there must be extensive communication with our people so that our people get to understand what is this global warming and climate change we're talking about.
Aradumalana, lebatu bokelebe ile manzadi swanala tza horu, honali di pisano tere di tenele tse ngilema loco, yakaharansiana, ela horu batle bakonohot halo hanyasenke, horu buakan haru buaka tutafalo, haru buaka di petehosa ma mo aloapi.
And each one of us must ask ourselves, hori, nagilinti bimudise alone, what is my role and what are my responsibilities in mitigating the effect of climate?
Me mogole moguwaruna ipoze, yakana yana ki ipoze hori, hakili pitame, khe, nasia besa kaki, engmo ku di reho hori refetole, eh, retaka di hatotarabo lo tzei di bagang eh, ma, eh, mo, adipetehosa loa.
And I must assure you, climate change is not a parliament discussion.
Yano ki batla hori belala hori, eh, kanya koto taka, di petehosa ma mo aloapi, hasi mutoto, osharan kopalamente.
Because it does not only affect members of parliament.
Kahona kaya me fela malokoa parlament.
It affects all of us.
Iramaro.
Now what role can you play as an individual, as a community?
Janu we, na jakamu tokabongue, lilu na jakaa, baahi, sia besalu na, ikan nasife.
Nzeri kofelan?
Eh, rathalo hanyana.
Re, reso.
Rathalo hanyana.
Ay, ar leso ki, keso, kimoji. Kimojan, awasa toni kuru kimoji.
Ay lo hori reso, ya do remoji, ne?
Yeah. You see, our infrastructure, it's affected by soil erosion.
Eh, di, di relo di kakota ro na, eh, di abiaki koholehoya mu.
Our education, our health, our communication, all of these are affected by climate change.
Di lo tere ya banali tuto, eh, butsho jarona, di khaile tano, di lo tere nutzochi, di abiaki se.
We spoke at length about the wetlands, the floods, the droughts.
Re buile eh, katsala esen le tse ngare di lo tere di twayna li di komelelo eh, manuani eh, le tse di.
But what are our responsibilities as community members and as individuals?
Me potoyaro na fanu fa ena horu, ro na bi kara balo jarona jakaba tokabongue, lema loco asachaba itlo hona bofe.
To reducing carbon emissions.
Jua, hofokoza di hasa tere di tse di wa momo uen.
Now, Councillor Munzu, you must tell the executive mayor and the speaker.
Janu rekopa hori eh, mole khotla Munzu obolele eh, mukruda hamaha, moholule ratoropo.
That we had sent this invitation as far back as February that we are coming here.
Hori, reileraro me la tali, zo ka February, hori retafa.
And I had requested that when you send an invite to the people of Madibing, you must attach this bill so that when we come here, you don't see this bill for the first time.
Ibilaki neke kopa ya, aloha taliso eh, rumela, imametelle uen, ha, ine, rumela, hori, ete, ekhonohonewa batwama Madibing, ho sansa honali nako, baska ebona fela haba horo hafa.
Yeah, nzeri so.
Ah, ar mor.
I'm not trying to shift or absolve anyone from responsibility.
So hakileki ho rola opa bi kara be.
But I'm saying this communication came here on the 28th of February.
So sekele kanfela horo sathalo sa ke horu taliso ene, re rumiza ke di 28th of February.
But I must also appreciate the level of engagement today, honourable members.
Maybe la hapet, ritume la tata kobo, reilera bonsana, lelo na selika nyoselu reilera bonsana, le ro na kasone.
As expected, honali baba be di baba raru, paiku edinga di komo. Eh, you know?
Jakaha, renenzeri libele tse, one or two people started speaking about cattle.
Eh, lady maine.
Eh, mines.
All the views are important to us. We have agreed to be public representatives.
Me di twaylo zo kesele di ntsi tse, dibutoka tata mo horo na kahona re dumalana horo tlohudi.
And we assure you that issues that have nothing to do with us as a committee of environment.
Kajalo khe, di, matata a lo horu aubakule, me asa amaleka hopelo ro na eh, mo hanyaya eh, tikolo ho.
We are going to refer them to relevant portfolio committees.
Ri lehoza ma tata aure affitiseta hori di portfolio committee tse lena hori, ke tse di maleba tse di diranka u.
Somebody spoke about the role of youth.
Honali bangoba ileba buaka sia besa bashaba nanle so.
The accessibility of information.
Moho le kufikela la tse di moseto.
Public participation and community participation.
Ho tzaa karolo hamalo ko asachaba, mo ho le baahi.
All of these things, now we are not doing them as a tick box exercise.
Hari di ri lo tse no, horu hotu fela, ri di rete diro ernere ne zu hidira.
We are compelled by law to be here.
Re pateli diwa di molao, horu retafa.
Somebody spoke about section 24 of the constitution.
Honali mogu yo ubilenka, karolo ya 24, ya molao teo.
That we, the state has a duty to create an environment that is not harmful to the well-being of the people.
Hori eh, puso enali bi kara balo jarohotama tikolo ho ele hori, ha eh, ba kele batoma tata haya hobats.
And all of these are noted.
Mi di lo tere nutzochi, ri kuadi le fa fat.
Nzeri?
Eh, remoji.
Nzeri moja.
Remoji.
Right. Now. This is how we get to the end of our meeting.
Janu re, retajaana, mobukuchonjua kopanoya ro.
Agreed?
Radubalan.
Yeah, bavan kale bali ting banali, problem ya item seventeen. Tolo. Problem ya item seventeen.
So most of, most of, most of us who are here or some of them, they're having a problem of item seventeen.
And we have brought item seventeen.
So, eri kilaka yo ne?
Chilesi re tolaka items seventeen.
Janu potse koro ra, ra koi bona kai eh, chileka?
Okay. Kulamnyang. Okay.
Ko khoron ele ekomorau.
I'm going to request that we afford an opportunity to the elders.
Ki tloho kopa horu reneye chono ho bahudi.
And the people with disabilities.
Le batoba elahora batse la kabochole.
And then as we exit that door.
Ya hara taberi itwa kakoro eyle.
We all grab our item seventeen.
Ikoko pahora molebongwalona, Louis ele selona, salona, sabu seventeen, item seventeen.
Yeah, by so saying, I want to thank the people of Bojana La.
Eh, kar batla hori leboha, batoba Bojana La.
This brings our job as a committee to an end.
Seno sikisa di roya ro na jakakomitee, mobukuchonjua yo.
After visiting all the provinces, we had to conclude on this high note.
Mo ra horo huaite la di profense tzo khe, ritume la horo hona kouweza di roya ro na, kama emo akwahudi mojaana.
So many of you are wondering, honerbata kuka fela beretza maya, what next?
Some of you are wondering whether did you just want to listen and actually get away or? Hutlo kudi rehamo ra horo hamo.
Now, as a portfolio committee, we are going to meet.
So ritlo kopa namoho jakaa el komidiya portfolio.
To discuss all the views that we have extracted from the people of South Africa.
Eh, koto taka di twaylo zo kese, elahora reilera di amochela, ho tza koba toba Africa Bor.
Eh, we'll discuss disagree to agree, agree to disagree, debate, and use everything else that will be on the table.
So ritlo koto tla, re dumalana, mo kote di ue, re sa dumalana, mo kote di ue, re ngangisa, na kate di ue fela jalole jaloo eh, hori, re ekobukuchonjua serabata horose fikela.
But finally, we will adopt a report as a committee.
Me kwabukuchon, etara harasna, ho kuala pe ho jakakomitee.
And then present it to the National Assembly.
Reberi isa ho, koko kwanabose chaba.
And you are not going to present things that you did not say.
Hari ho banaya se peselosa se bua.
And once the National Assembly agrees and approves it.
Me etara fan koko kwanabose chaba, eh, amochela pe ho, e u, ibile, ebe, eh, amochela simus, idumalana le u ne, ebe, eh, amochela simuso.
It will then go to the National Council of Provinces.
Etabe ifitisedi ah, horo lo kotala di profense la abose chaba.
For them to undertake their own legislative consultative process.
Horo bone, ba seka seka, ho yakame la wana, e ba idiri san fava seka seka eh.
Hopefully it will be public hearings again.
Me ibile, ho kanakah di reha horu, ba ya ho twaya di koko kwanote, zo ta patalata tse di twayna li tse no, ha pe.
Now, if you are called again to a public hearing on climate change, you must know it is not the National Assembly Portfolio Committee, it is the Select Committee of the NCOP.
Kajalo, haluka bidiwa horo lo tato ta hapeka, mona komo olewa di petehosa ma emo aloapi. Louisi, horo seno sasasi, zuhunku ya koko kwanabose chaba, me seu zua hori di komiti tse di kopi ue za NCOP.
Yeah, karata kamukobuens twayana kate. Can you interpret that?
I like the way you speak Siswana.
Yeah. Ki wonuru aleboh, I don't want you to think, I want you to interpret. Right, so from there, after the NCOP has undertaken their processes.
Me baraha hamo ha, NCOP is na eh, kudi ra, koyaka di tula hanyo zabo ne?
Alibo ne ba dumalana, the bill will then be sent to the president.
When they do agree together, then the bill, etabe romela komo president.
After the president has signed it, it will be the law of the land.
Me etara ha, mo presidenta asna hori saena, etabe janu ena molauwana haya ro.
So it will be an act of parliament, it will be binding on all of us.
Etabe ele molauase parlamenta, ota bo, ota ma, mogole mogu waro.
Eh, but you have contributed to the formation and promulgation. Eh, laiza kere na ke koli.
So lai, laiza kere.
Eh, kavu.
Adiri bakoa parlamenten.
The protection services.
Ele bata chirelezo.
Media.
Eh, bakaso.
The interpreters.
Eh, baba tolokan.
Eh, who else? The secretariat.
Eh, bakuali di barona.
This has been hectic five months.
So renileli di koi di za tanoza tiro esen kanakase.
Eh, aba echa ebe bi kucha beke fela, after beke kenale bon.
Then let them go home and rest for a week. After one week, they'll be with me.
Eh, reso.
So reso.
Yeah.
Le bo.
Re, rean? Yeah, netso. After beke, kiajokuke mantach.
Yeah.
Beke tlang mantach, enale boner reso.
Yeah, so, so today is Monday, Noosik Monday, bein dey butler leso.
Yani ki batla hutal kanyawa, ya, arekali watu watu watu.
Iki sere, do you want to hear about that, the act story etcetera, etcetera?
Ka uriano batwama Madibing reluhile miti wutueti. Thank you very much.
Thank you.